I'd like to remind everybody to turn their cellphones off for the duration of the meeting. I would also like to, since today was our first time for doing the executive session prior to the council meeting, when I opened the meeting, the citizens and staff that are in the room weren't here when we discussed the council members that are missing this evening. And I'll just give you an update, Mr. Benson is ill this evening, so he has been excused for an illness. Councilwoman Carson is still on vacation, and Mr. McIlwenny is having a procedure done, a medical procedure done. So, the three of them have been excused, and tonight you have the six of us to handle the meeting. So, with nothing more to say about that, the roll call's all been taken. First item on the agenda is to amend the agenda, and the staff has asked to remove ordinance 1885 from the agenda. What is the council's desires? Mr. Bullock?
Move to remove ordinance 1885 from the agenda this evening.
Okay, Councilman Teeter?
Second.
A motion of second, to amend the agenda to remove ordinance 1885. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Next item is to take care of the moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Will everybody please stand? Also, I'm gonna allow, Mr. Teeter would like to mention that we had our resident pass, that he would like you to keep in your moment of silence in your prayers. Mr. Teeter?
Yes, please, I would like to, everyone to know that Vernie Gehigan, longtime resident of Commerce City, she was 95 years old, passed Thursday night, in a care facility up in Boulder. She was a longtime resident of Commerce City and business, and keep their thoughts and prayers to them. Thank you.
Now, I would like the staff to go around and introduce the audience, please.
Hans Fattler.
Benny Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Patricia Murray.
Guilla Maserne.
Would you like to say your name?
Deborah Aggleston.
Ray Stein.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Mike Brown, Parks and Recreation.
Tracy Ferguson, Parks and Recreation.
Steve Thames, Planner.
Chris Kramer, Planning Division.
Darren Sterling, City Engineer.
Ms. Ryan Cordero, Government Relations.
Roger Tenhumberg, Finance.
Chuck Thonier, Police Department.
Jim Hayes, Community Development and Economic Development.
Paul Benedetti.
Next item on the agenda is Citizen Communication, and I have the sign-up sheet, and there's nobody on it, but I know there are some folks that walked in a little bit late. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to participate in the Citizen Communication this evening? Seeing done, we'll move on. First item on the agenda is a study item, Mile High Greyhound Park Update, and I'll ask the staff person that's gonna make that presentation come forward. Jim?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I might, just as an introductory statement to all the presentations, there are six of them on the agenda tonight. Lots of good information will be presented, but because there are so many of them, we're gonna move through the material fairly quickly, and just simply ask that you ask questions for those things that you'd like clarification on, just to help us move through the items in a more efficient and timely manner. The presentations were included in your packets, so you'll have those to refer back to.
Perfect, thank you.
Again, the first one is Mr. Hayes regarding the Mile High Greyhound Park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jim Hayes, Community Development Director. We've got another bimonthly update on the Mile High Greyhound Park Redevelopment Project. I'm gonna have Chris Kramer assist me with this presentation tonight, because it's gonna be focused largely on the blight study and the condition survey that we completed within the last several weeks. First of all, we did provide two updates to the council before, October 24th and December 12th. At those two updates, did provide a brief summary of immediate projects that we took on after the purchase of the property. The public outreach was the focus of last December's presentation, and then some of our planning efforts. So again, for the benefit of the public, who is the URA? It's the Urban Renewal Authority, is the branch of the city dedicated to redeveloping slum and blighted areas. The city council's the governing body of the URA, with the council serving as members of the Board of Directors. The mayor serves as chairman of the board, and the city manager serves as the executive director. Again, just a brief map to orient everybody, 64th Avenue's along the north, 62nd along the south, Holly Street on the east, and Highway 85, Highway 2 on the west. And before I turn over to Chris here, I did wanna point out that a lot of communities will hire outside consultants to develop these types of condition surveys that are included in your packet, sometimes to the tune of $20,000 to $40,000. And I'm happy to report that our planning staff was able to do the research, consult with our city attorney's office, and develop this with in-house resources. All right, Chris?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As Jim mentioned, I am here to focus specifically in on the current condition survey that has recently been produced, and a draft copy was included in your packet. So, before we get into the specifics of the actual survey, let's just real briefly talk about what a current condition survey is. You may have heard other people refer to it as a blight study. A blight study, or I'll actually be referring to it as a current condition survey, it's a necessary step in the urban renewal process, which has been the process that's been contemplated all along for the dog track. Just to provide a little context about what an urban renewal process is really for, it's a state process authorized by the state that allows the local governing body, which in this case is the Urban Renewal Authority, to remedy and prevent blight. So remedy existing blight and prevent future blight. Blight is a term that you've probably heard us refer to a number of times. It is certainly not a term that is our favorite, but it is a term that is required through the state language. And it's basically, in essence, intended to summarize those conditions that, those physical, social, or economic conditions that exist on a property to the detriment, to the health, which represents a detriment to the health and vitality of a community. It is really the first step in a multiple-step process to allow URA funding tools to help revitalize an area. First step is to establish blight through the current condition survey, which is what we're here to discuss tonight. Then at a later time, we will complete the second phase of that, which is to do an urban renewal plan. That'll come at a later date. Finally, once that urban renewal plan is in, those URA funding tools, such as tax increment financing, can begin to be utilized. What are the benefits of doing the current condition survey? The original blight study that was done for the larger urban renewal area was done in 1998, and there are a lot of changes that exist to this area. So, if we wanted to have the ability to utilize the full 25 years that state statutes allows us for funding through a tax increment financing, 1998, that we're almost halfway, or maybe just over half, through that 25-year clock. So as a result, to allow for the maximum redevelopment opportunity, we need to allow that 25 years to be in full. So to reestablish that 25-year clock, first step is, we basically have to go through the process again. So as a result, the first step is the current condition survey, which is why we're here So how do you do a current condition survey? What's included? And again, the big thing is a process to find blight. A blight which represents a multiplicity of urban problems for a community that center around health issues, social deficiencies, and physical deterioration of specific sites or districts. The way the state statute outlines communities to find blight is really dividing up the property into 11 different factors or criteria that a community needs to evaluate. There's a lot of specific rules that we won't get into unless you're interested, but in essence, four of the 11 must be present for a community to be able to find blight. However, if nobody, none of the existing property owners object, then you actually only need one of the 11 factors. And since the entire property is owned by the Urban Renewal Authority, we're confident that no one will probably be objecting. So, the good news is, as you'll see in just a second, we far exceed the four factors, so we'll have some, we'll be pretty conservative and have some wiggle room there. So this is a summary, we're actually gonna go through these, I'll go through really quickly, but this is a summary of all 11 blight factors that the state outlines, and through our survey, we found that nine of the 11 were present. That involves doing primary observations on the site, utilizing GIS, which is Geographic Information Systems, for aerial analysis, and finally consulting with both interior departments and outside agencies such as Tri-County to get factual background. So quickly going through these one at a time, the first one is slum or deteriorated structures. The survey finds this condition to be present, this blighted condition to be present. And more specifically, within the site, the actual structures themselves, we found roof leaks, damages to the floor, ceiling assemblies, collapsed walls, and the roof itself was leaking through multiple floors. So single roof leaks ended up affecting multiple floors. Inadequate street layout, we found that blight condition to be present, not only because the onsite layout is difficult, because there is no onsite street layout, but it also acts as a barrier to surrounding neighborhoods' street connectivity. As you can see, a lot of the streets to the north basically come to a dead end at the subject property. Not only is the onsite street layout difficult, the major roadways getting to the site represent challenges, and are definitely presenting difficult access to the site, specifically to the west, US 85 and State Highway 2. Related to that is a faulty lot layout, that's condition number three. The survey found that to be present as well. There are actually five lots on the property, and some of them are not adjacent to public right-of-way, which is what you need for access. That lack of access represents the inability for the parcels to be able to redevelop. Further, a majority of the site is contained by one large parcel. That large parcel is not conducive to redevelopment, due to its, the shape and the configuration of that. So the faulty lot layout is a condition that is present as well. Unsanitary or unsafe conditions, this really begins to talk about if people were to occupy the site, how would it work? And as you can tell by the pictures and the report, there is a variety of unsanitary or unsafe conditions. There's missing doors in certain structures that represents a lack of security, which then presents a safety problem. There was a variety of evidence of rodent and animal infestation throughout multiple structures. A lot of the underlying electrical equipment was found to be substandard and potentially dangerous. That actually is gonna factor into a few of these blight conditions. Moving on to number five, deterioration of the site. The last one really, the last couple have begun to look at the building itself, this one's beginning to look at the overall site, outside of the building. And, you know, this one's actually easier to see for most people, because you don't have to go into the building to see it, but the paving on the entire site is definitely worn, and in some places, large potholes exist that would represent a danger to vehicles that were attempting to use them. And many of the structures that you can see from the street are obviously dilapidated, such as fencing, curb, or onsite curbs, et cetera. Number six is inadequate public improvements or utilities. Again, there are no onsite streets, which certainly represents inadequate public improvement on the site itself, but beyond that, there are, the sidewalks, there's no onsite sidewalks. The perimeter has a sidewalk, but as you can see from the picture on your right, it certainly is not up to our certain codes, which means that if you're in a wheelchair or have a stroll, or you are not gonna be able to utilize these sidewalks, so it kind of actually forces you out into the street, which represents a dangerous situation. The public utilities as it relates to water and sanitary, you know, the site had operated for a while with a single large user, but depending on redevelopment opportunities, the water and sanitary, or sorry, the water and sewer situation may be not sufficient for redevelopment, certain redevelopment opportunities, depending on what goes there. So as a result, this particular category was found to be present as well. Number seven is defective title. There were no liens or value reductions that staff found thus far on this particular blight category, and as a result, while there might be something associated with the title that represents a difficulty, staff did not find this particular category to represent a blight finding. So as a result, this is one of the two where we did not have it present. Number eight, life-endangering fire conditions. There were a variety of fire hazards that our building division was able to identify, and as an example, on the first and second floor of the main grandstand, which, you know, those floors are rather large, there is no sprinkler system, and it's only present for part of the third floor. That obviously represents, if this building were being built today, there is no way that would be possible. Number nine, so obviously, I'm sorry, on number eight, that blight condition is present. Number nine, unsafe buildings, this is obviously similar to number eight. It is certainly unsafe to live or work in the main grandstand building due to the variety of building and fire code violations. In addition, the animal infestation, as noted before, obviously does not create a healthy environment for people to occupy, and there are structural integrity issues with some of the walls that are collapsing, and again, the water leaks, as we mentioned before. Number 10, this is a little tricky, but number 10 relates to environmental contamination. There was an initial environmental assessment of the property done through, it's called a Phase 1 and a Phase 2. In essence, the Phase 1 showed the presence of glycol on the, within the soil of the property. However, because that's a documented form, we're, staff is unclear as to what the thresholds are that would warrant a finding of blight as related to that, the glycol. In addition, there was a separate asbestos study performed that showed that there was some asbestos throughout the main grandstand structure, but it is unclear to staff what levels, and if they exceed any kind of standards that a court might use to determine a baseline for environmental contamination. Due to that, staff felt that because there were so many other blight categories that were found, it wasn't necessary for us to push the envelope in regards to environmental contamination, and so as a result, that was not found to be meeting the minimums to warrant a blight finding. Finally, substantial underutilization or vacancy. Obviously, the entire site is currently vacant, no one's utilizing it, except for the occasional fox that you might see. So as a result, that represents a hindrance for, obviously, current development, because there is none, but future development, the site vacancy represents a threat to future development as well. So as a result, that blight condition is, the survey finds is present. So in summary, there is certainly a sufficient number of factors required by state law for the area to be declared as blighted. So as a result, the survey is recommending to council that council direct staff to prepare an urban renewal plan after the passage of a resolution shortly by city council that finds blight conditions, basically adopting the current condition survey. Once that is done, the urban renewal plan will be able to be commenced, once the appropriate timing is right for that to start. So with that, I will kick it back over to Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Chris. So just real quick, we'll conclude with some project updates, and then we'll take any questions you may have. Parallel to this blight study process, we have been continuing to meet weekly, multi-departmental team that meets every Wednesday. We had our first visioning meeting on February 1st, where we started to take some of the citizen input, as well as the NIOP focus group information from January 24th, tried to articulate some land use plan concepts. We also identified some of the major transportation issues that are facing this property, both on and off the site. Over the next several weeks, we're gonna be refining some concept plans, and really, the first phase of this is just intended to provide some marketing collateral for the International Council of Shopping Centers. And we're not gonna go ahead and put a fine line to those plans, or place buildings necessarily or anything like that, really just to develop some concepts, so we can start to market this property. We have had some meetings with CDOT to address state highway and access issues, actually going all the way down to 270, and how that could affect this property. We're evaluating financing tools, not only TIF, but I believe I mentioned last time that there are several financing tools that are available to us. We actually had a presentation from an attorney regarding new market tax credits, which we think is really exciting ways where we can leverage those to help low-income businesses possibly come into the area and help them get started. We're also evaluating demolition costs. Again, that's a multi-departmental team of Public Works and the Building Division, looking at costs to potentially demolish the property. Again, as Chris mentioned, once we get through the blight condition survey, we'll be bringing back a resolution to you, probably in April, to request that you adopt formal findings of blight, and direct the staff to prepare a new urban renewal plan. I wanna point out, though, that we're not gonna get formal with that plan until we have a new developer partner onboard, because we don't wanna kick off that TIF clock prematurely. The other thing we do wanna do is backtest that with the market feasibility, to determine if there's actually a market for some of the land uses that we come up with. So real quick, Boys and Girls Club, again, update on that, we're still showing the site in the southeast corner of the property. Currently negotiation agreements, Mr. Cordero and I had, and Ms. Stevens and I had a good meeting with some of their folks this afternoon, actually, and so we'll be continuing to update you on that progress as we move forward. The Economic Development Administration grant, you've been hearing a lot about this the last couple of updates. Again, we've got a grant that's hanging out there for $70,000, does have a requirement for $70,000 local match, about $40,000 of that can be staff time, though, so it'll be in-kind services for most of that, and we're gonna be using that to, again, backtest these land uses for market feasibility. The initial response was favorable by the local office, but it, funding is being delayed right now by the Department of Commerce in Washington. Lastly, we're on this parallel track with NIOP. Some of you attended some of the kickoff events on January 24th. We actually have the students coming out to the Civic Center this week, Tuesday and Thursday, to get some questions answered from key staff, and then they're gonna go back and start refining their plans. We have a second meeting scheduled in March with them, and then they'll be finalizing, of course, everything at the awards dinner on May 2nd. Concurrent with that is the ICSC planning that is ongoing, again, developing those marketing materials, and developing our list of developer contacts that we can make down in Las Vegas at that conference. in Las Vegas at that conference. So future meetings, again, will come back every couple of months. And so the next one's planned in April for a project update. At that point, we'd ask for the conditions resolution. And then in June, a few weeks after the ICSC conference, we'd come back and give you another update, especially as it relates to the dog track. That concludes my presentation, and I did want to point out that Mr. Paul Benedetti is in the audience. He's a special counsel that's been retained by our city's attorney's office to assist us with these URA issues, to make sure we're doing everything properly. Thank you.
Next presentation, Mr. City Manager? Bicycle and pedestrian master plan?
Yes, we are ready to move on unless any council members have any questions about the dog track.
Council, have any concerns or questions concerning the dog track property? Only thing I would say, I noticed on here it said that you needed to update the URA and the city council. Since we know them, you want us to just tell them?
Yes, if you could pass that along to them, we'd appreciate it.
That'll save you another meeting.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and go forward with the bicycle and pedestrian master plan.
There are several folks here from our Parks and Recreation Department, Carolyn Keith, Tracy Ferguson, and Mike Brown.
Good. Did you bike here today, Mike?
Yeah. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Again, I'm Mike Brown. I'm the Parks Planning and Operations Manager in the Parks and Recreation Department. Also joining us is Tracy Ferguson. She's the Parks Planner and also the staff person who is responsible for the day-to-day management of this particular project. It's our pleasure to provide you with a second update on the overall comprehensive pedestrian master plan for bicycle and pedestrian facilities. We did also update you, or we did an update to council at that time on July 25th of 2011. So again, this will be the second update. Did want to mention that tonight's presentation is clearly or simply an informational update. No city council action is being requested at this particular time. The city received in December of 2010, $120,000 in grant funding to complete this project. Those funds came from federal stimulus funding that was administered through Tri-County Health Department at the local level. And I want to mention that this plan complements the recently adopted comprehensive plan for the city, as well as the transportation plan, both of which were adopted in May of 2010. Keeping in mind that the comprehensive plan did identify the need for additional and/or enhanced pedestrian and bicycle facilities, but that plan really takes a look at issues, land use issues from sort of the 40,000-foot level. The transportation plan as well identified a need, again, for additional and improved bicycle and pedestrian plans, but again, that was kind of looking at things from a 10,000-foot level. So this plan actually gets down on the ground and starts to look specifically at how we can improve those facilities, exactly what they would look like, where they would be, what the treatments would be, the improvements would be. And we think this plan in large part is going to address that. The overall goals and objectives of the plan, first one there is to close the gaps, overcome barriers, and really create a citywide regional active travel network, is what we're calling it. Keeping in mind, I'm sure if you're familiar with Commerce City, at least the historic part, we have railroads, canals, highways, all sorts of impediments or barriers to anyone easily walking anywhere or riding a bicycle anywhere. So we're really trying to close those gaps, again, overcome those barriers, but create a safe, safe facilities for folks to use, facilities that are pleasant to use. And ultimately, in addition to that, we of course want to encourage citizens to use bicycle and pedestrian facilities. That's not only because of the environmental benefits that come as a result of that, but of course because of the health and wellness benefits that are associated with folks getting out and using bicycle and pedestrian facilities. And then lastly, we want to make sure that the plan addresses, and it is specifically in the implementation chapter, that there are effective and enduring implementation policies that help assist over the course of time, given we believe this plan will take some time to implement, but we want to make sure that those policies, again, ensure that it is implemented over time. To date, we chose our consultant to complete the plan that was DHM Design. The city has been working with DHM for a number of years, and we're very satisfied and always happy with the work that they do for us. We formed a technical working group, which was comprised of representatives from community development, Public Works, the Police Department, Parks and Recreation, as well as both of our school districts in the city, 27J and Adams County School District 14, and as well as a couple of local nonprofits, specifically Live Well Commerce City and Community Enterprise. And then lastly, the Tri-County Health Department. We figured since they were nice enough to fund the plan, we would ask them to participate as well. To date, the technical working group has met three times to provide input and evaluate the contents of the plan during its development phase. In fact, the third meeting was just today, as a matter of fact. While the technical working group is very important, that we have those specific individuals with those agencies involved in developing the plan, we also want to make sure that we got substantive input from the public on this particular plan. So there's a list of a few events that we attended. We had consultants and staff at these particular events gathering input from folks. We had a public open house in April of 2011. Staff and consultants attended El Dia de los Niños, which was an event at the Adams County, or excuse me, Adams City High School. My understanding is there were approximately 1,000 people that attended that event. We were also present at both community outreaches last year, the one in June at River Run Park in the Northern Range, and then also in August at Pioneer Park. And then lastly, Derby Days, which I believe there were several thousand people in attendance over the course of the day, as well as probably 1,200 to 1,500 folks who attended the two community outreaches. So again, it's, we tried to gather as much substantive input as we could. I would note the public open house, we probably didn't have as much attendance as we had hoped for. We did have a couple of council members there, and we certainly appreciated their input. But the folks that we did have there, we really believe that we were able to get some valuable and substantive input from those few individuals that did show up. The plan itself has five chapters, and of course, I've spoken a little bit about the goals and objectives and the implementation portion. Really, the crux of the plan, though, the core plan element is this roster of catalytic projects. It's 26 specific projects, and in the plan, they're shown conceptually or in a schematic phase. They have specific descriptions, typical cross-sections and so forth, for these 26 essentially routes that would connect folks from a whole variety of specific locations in and around the city. The one thing that we wanted to ensure with this plan is that it wasn't just something that you would just set on the shelf and it very vaguely described things. As you go through the plan, as your copy was provided, of course, with your packet, you'll see that it's very specific about those routes, and I'm going to go over a couple of them here in a moment. But essentially, it will describe the route, what the particular improvements are that are going to be required along that route from one segment to the next, and that could be anywhere from adding bike lanes to just adding signage, to adding bike lanes on both sides of the street, adding signage and widening the sidewalks, as well as in some areas, significant pedestrian crossing improvements at intersections. So it varies along each of these routes, depending upon, again, where you are on that particular route and what the priority of that route is. So examples of those would be the 60th Avenue Crosstown Link, the Town Center Greenway, and the 72nd Avenue Connector. The first one there is the 60th Avenue Crosstown Link, again, starting to the east here at the Civic Center, Dick's Sporting Goods Park, Rocky Mountain National Wildlife Refuge. And going west, you can see all of the things there in the yellow stars that this particular route would connect to. The dotted black lines on the plan are also routes within the system that would intersect with this. So again, this particular route would start here, would go east, would connect to the Conter Community Center, would connect to Monaco Park, Pioneer Park, the Recreation Center, and then Walmart, one of our busy commercial retail districts. So that would be one example of one of these, well, I should say, one example of the overall 26 projects. The next one is the Town Center Greenway, originating at the Dahlia Trailhead off of the Sand Creek Regional Greenway, which is roughly at 270 in Dahlia, and getting folks connected, again, to that 60th Avenue and Walmart area. Again, we have Parkway Market there as well, the Recreation Center, the Wembley redevelopment site, and then ultimately connecting to Fairfax Park. Third one, the 72nd Avenue Connector. As you're all aware, there's been a lot of focus on the Derby area recently, or actually the last several years. We want to continue that focus. It's always been contemplated to do improvements along 72nd Avenue, to do traffic calming, but also improve the pedestrian and bicycle facilities. So again, starting at the east, it would connect Adams City High School to the Derby area, to the library, Adams City Middle School, and then ultimately to the future RTD light rail location there. So those would be some examples of those individual projects. This map represents the system in the historic part of the city overall. You can see there that the black lines are existing trails or multi-use paths. The red dotted lines represent all of those, or a good portion of those 26 individual projects. Keeping in mind, again, those could be anywhere from just adding signage to adding bike lanes, widening the sidewalks, adding signage, anywhere in between. And it could be, vary from segment to segment with each one of those routes. The plan does describe specific improvement treatments that can be used in any one of those scenarios. The purple circles would indicate those particular intersections that pedestrian and bicycle improvements would need to be made to make them safe and make folks feel comfortable in using them. The next one is the city north and south. It's the entire, the entire system. Again, the circle's representing intersection improvements that are needed. The green dotted line are future greenway trails that we have in our Prairie Ways Action Plan, which is our overall comprehensive master plan for parks, trails, and open space. Again, the red dotted lines are those routes with a whole variety of improvements, again, anywhere from signs to widening sidewalks. And then we also have future trails and multi-use paths, and then existing ones. So next steps toward completing the plan. Currently, we're working on a wayfinding signage system that would accompany this plan. We think it's important that you have some very identifiable signage that's very intuitive, that helps folks get around and figure out what's the best route to take to get from any given point in the city to another or any specific destination. Tomorrow, the plan is currently in draft form, and it is posted on the city's website as of last Friday. I believe communications sent a press release out about that, letting you know about that. It is available for public comment until the 27th of this month. We will also be having a public open house on the 22nd here at the Civic Center in the atrium, where we'll be taking input and comments on the plan. Certainly, if council has any comments, suggestions, revisions to the plan, we would certainly like to have those prior to the 27th. And you can get those either through the city manager's office or directly to me or Tracy. And we will certainly, at that point, evaluate all of those comments and incorporate any changes into the draft that may be needed as a result, again, of the public input as well as council input. From there, on March 5th, staff will be coming back, asking the council to adopt the plan by resolution. And we're doing it by resolution initially due to some grant reporting constraints. The final report and all the expenditures thereof for this grant have to be submitted by March 18th, which didn't allow us time to go through two readings to adopt this by ordinance. So we'll be asking council to adopt it by resolution initially, and then staff will come back at a later date and request adoption by ordinance. And then lastly, I would note for council and anybody in the audience who are watching at home, the draft plan can be viewed in its entirety at www.c3gov.com/walkbikefit. And we encourage you and invite you to go take a look at it. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I would certainly be willing to answer or entertain any questions council may have.
Thanks, Mike. Mr. Moreno?
Mike, thanks for the presentation. You brought up that $90,000 was used in grant funds to put the plan together. The $30,000 that we have, that'll be used specifically for improving signage, is that correct?
It's for the development of the wayfinding signage system. It's essentially another plan that goes along with the plan for the routes and improvements and so on and so forth. So it's essentially a comprehensive signage plan that goes with it, yes.
Okay. And the few signs that we do have currently that direct people where to go for the designated bike paths, always have the bike icon and then a number underneath them. What's the significance of the number?
Thank you for the question. It's a good question. It's one we debated today at our meeting with the technical working group while we were talking about signage. Generally, that identifies a route, a specific route, that may get you from, and I'm sorry, I don't have them memorized, but it may get you from the rec center to, say, Fairfax Park, and it would be route number five. The consultants we're working with have found that it's, attaching a route number to a bike route is not all that effective. You're better off actually to identify specific locations or destinations along that route, and people are more interested in knowing that. So we would probably be looking at doing that rather than assigning a number to a specific route. We would also be looking at something that would, a specific logo and a specific color for the signs, as well as kiosks at key intersections or points where people would look at an overall system map. Again, so that it's user-friendly and it really assists folks rather than just a sign on a post that most people ignore.
Sure, great. And do we anticipate being able to fund some of these improvements, bike lane improvements and pedestrian improvements, with grant dollars? Or would this be something that is presented in the capital improvement project budget?
These projects, I believe, would appear in the capital improvement project budgets. We're still doing a little bit of research to see if our main grant funders can be a source for these type of improvements, specifically GOCO or Great Outdoors Colorado on the Adams County Open Space Board. The reason being that the vast majority of these improvements are within road right-of-way. It would actually be doing improvements to the road, which generally don't fit with the intent of those grants, but we believe that there's some room to do that. Hasn't been clearly identified yet, though.
Thanks.
Sure.
Mr. Teter?
Mike, thanks for your presentation. Just for information, the consultant that you chose, is that this DHM, is that from Commerce City or someplace else?
They're located in Denver.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Thanks, Mike, for your presentation. We've had many consultants come through our city here, working with the city and all. How much of this portion, or if any, has the city contribute to that, as far as the budget?
This plan was entirely funded from grant dollars from the stimulus funding, other than staff support on the project.
And do you know what that amount is, how much the grant was?
The grant was for $120,000. $90,000 of it was for the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, and $30,000 of it was for the wayfinding system that accompanied it.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Moreno?
Just one more comment. Councilman Bullock and I, I think, were the two council members that had the opportunity to attend the open house meeting early on. And I just got to say, I was very impressed with the consultants who worked on this project because they didn't just create a plan. They came to the city, they rode their bikes through the city, they walked the city to see where exactly those improvements needed to be made. So I just want to commend the consultants that were chosen because they really did have that physical, on-the-ground experience to be able to create this plan.
I would agree.
Mr. Bullock?
Just echoing what Mr. Moreno said, it was highly unusual when you see a consultant come to town and ride around with the staff on bicycles to make sure they know the lay of the land before they start any project. They were very good in what they did. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, thanks, Mike, for you and your staff putting together the presentation and taking care of this part of it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is council business. There are four items listed under council business. They're informal and being presented to assist the council in preparing for our retreat. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, you are exactly right. This is the final night of staff presentations prior to council's retreat at the end of the month. The first night of presentations, two weeks ago, Mr. Tinklenberg provided Part One of the overview of the long-range financial plan. There's a lot of information to digest, which is why we broke it into two sections. So Roger's here tonight to provide Part Two.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'll be moving through this very quickly, so please strap on your seatbelts. Last time, we talked about the general fund, both the revenues and expenditures, and I noted that there are some revenues that are vulnerable, particularly 2.2 million that comes from the state and Adams County. The other takeaways from that presentation was that we need to constrain growth in operating costs. There's currently not enough revenue to fund the inflation in operating costs and capital projects. We need to identify the ongoing We need to identify the ongoing operation and maintenance costs of projects, and we need to be able to fund that ongoing operation and maintenance when we do those projects. We talked about the estimates of revenues and expenditures and noted that the low estimate is the only one that's fiscally constrained, where the low revenues and the low-cost estimates match up. The others, both medium and the high, the estimate of expenditure exceeds the estimate of revenues for the medium and high. So that's why, again, making the point, we need to manage our budget carefully. Also, we talked about the growth in spending, talking about approximately 13% per year in growth of our city expenditures, which sounds like a lot until you look at the population growth, which was also approximately 13% per year, which is the top line there. So you can see expenditures track along with expenditure, with population growth very well. Then, talking a little bit more about that low estimate of expenditures and revenues, that assumes no new employees, no new service expansion, no major capital projects. So again, that, that's a very bare-bones type of approach. Looking at revenues, we talked about the need to cover our expenditures with proper budget management, and also that most revenues are reasonably stable. There are some that are vulnerable, particularly vulnerable due to the nature, and those are the intergovernmental revenues that come from the state and Adams County. The ones from the state, the big one is highway user tax at one and a half million, and then you have the smaller motor vehicle registration at 165,000, cigarette tax at 100,000. And then from the county, 430,000 of road and bridge tax. And that makes up the 2.2 million in the general fund. And my recommendation has been that we should look at ways to move that out of the general fund. The problem with that, of course, is then that leaves us with another $2.2 million gap that we would need to cover either with new revenue or reducing expenditures. The reason for moving that to the CIP is basically that it would, I'm sorry. It would provide funding for a couple of items that we haven't been able to fund adequately in recent years. That's primarily pavement management and concrete flatwork. It would also allow us to fund some parks maintenance projects. Moving back to what I had recommended back at the last council back almost a year ago is that we replace that 2.1 million with a refuse collection fee of 1.9 million and a stormwater utility fee. This is a new estimate of what it would actually replace in the general fund, and that's 871,000. The two of those together would generate 2.7 million, therefore covering that 2.2 million dollar gap. Now, obviously, there's political considerations. You know, I looked only at the finances, you know, how can we match up dollars? So this, this is a question for council. What measures are you willing to, to take a look at? In the CIP budget, the capital projects, we talked about the fact that we, we can cover our operating budget, but we're not going to be able to cover large capital projects, nor are we going to be able to cover ongoing operation and maintenance unless we identify new revenue sources. So that led to several conclusions. We need to priority rank the projects. We need to be able to identify the ongoing operation and maintenance costs. We need to establish phasing plans. We need to develop new funding sources, but it's possible to, to accomplish the task. So then, looking at the specific long-range financial plan, capital chapters, we covered drainage, facilities, parks, open space, recreation and trails, and transportation. So looking first at drainage, and again, I'm just going to skim through this. It's in the presentation so that you can read it at your leisure. New drainage is mostly development-funded. We have drainage basin fees in place, and we need to establish drainage basin fees in additional basins when those develop in the future. However, those do not pay for the ongoing maintenance, nor do they pay for the compliance with the federal mandate under the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. We have drainage structures in the historic city that need improvements. We don't have funding sources for those. So basically, to cover those drainage maintenance and the compliance with the N P D E S, we would need to generate 3. almost $4 million per year. And the recommendation is to look at a stormwater utility to do that. We talked previously with prior council that, you know, the South Historic City is urbanized, and Irondale, Irondale Gulch and First Creek Basin were developed with little consideration given to drainage. So there's no or limited drainage crossings at the O'Brien Canal, the Burlington Northern Railroad, the U P Railroad, I-76, Highway Two, or Highway 85. So we would need to acquire right-of-way and figure out how to adequately drain those areas. Now, South Platte and Sand Creek, those have well-defined drainage ways, but they also need improvements like drop structures and that type of thing. The challenges in the North area are that it's urbanizing, and as it shifts from agricultural to urban, there's an increase in stormwater runoff. And basically, what we have to do is be able to handle that accelerated erosion and sediment from that accelerated flow rate. In addition, there's no or limited drainage crossings at the O'Brien Canal, Burlington Northern, U P Railroad, sounds like a broken record. We need to figure out how we can get that water past those constrictions. In addition, there's no ongoing maintenance. As I mentioned before, the drainage fees pay only for new improvements. They do not pay for ongoing maintenance. In addition, we need to ramp up on our compliance with the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System regulations. Part of that is the MS Four. That's a municipal permitting requirement that we're required to do. And currently, we're spending 801,000 on water quality items and then about 69,000 on non-water quality items as a result of drainage. And if we ramp up that program fully like it needs to be, then those costs would become approximately 2 million and 1.4 million respectively for those two things. That's what gets you to that 3.4 million. Under the federal MS Four permitting, this is what we as a city are supposed to do. Public outreach, education and outreach. We're supposed to have public participation and involvement. We're supposed to detect illicit discharge and eliminate it. We're supposed to control construction site runoff, post-construction runoff, and also pollution prevention and good housekeeping. Currently, we're, our staffing for doing that effectively is estimated to cost about 140,000 per year. That's part of that 3.4 million. Capital costs would be an additional, at least one and a half million over the one and a half million needed for permitting and, and drainage way maintenance. Solutions, we need detention facilities to control runoff rates. We need drop structures, water quality features to remove silt and contaminants, et cetera, et cetera. We need to continue preparing regional drainage plans, develop funding mechanisms, require developers to continue dedicating drainage ways and floodways to the city to preserve, preserve as floodplains and open space corridors. Proactive solutions, the city has been proactive in these things. We've been requiring developers to require, to dedicate those drainage ways and floodways. We have developed regional drainage, drainage plans with Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, and we've established drainage basin impact fees on development. Here's just a quick overview. We have developed basins, South Platte River, Sand Creek, Irondale Gulch, First Creek. And then we have the undeveloped basins, Second Creek, Third Creek, Braby Draw, Box Elder Creek, and Victory Crossing. Looking at the undeveloped drainage basins, those can be fee-funded, again, as long as we continue implementing those drainage basin fees, and we can cover that estimated 37.2 million. That was back in 2004 cost estimate, but we can cover that with fees. In the developed drainage basins, we don't have that opportunity. We have no dedicated funding source. Development fees are limited, or that potential is limited. And so any improvements there have to compete with other capital projects for the limited general fund money. Here's those drainage basins, Irondale Gulch, 43 million, First Creek Infrastructure, 24.8 million, Second Creek, 2.9 million. And then we have some miscellaneous projects that are another 7.4. So the grand total that's not fee-funded is 78.6 million. This is an updated number. I just got the, the numbers today and updated the slide. We need to be able to fund somewhere between 15 and 20 million by 2020. Again, we talked about the priorities. It's, these are often lower priorities than like road projects, for example, but again, it's kind of out of sight, out of mind. When there's a lot of precipitation above normal, that's when you see flooding. That can, can, you know, threaten health, lives and property. So it, it really needs a dedicated funding source, source to resolve the issues. Some of the potential funding sources, we're going to pursue funding through grants and, you know, funding from Army Corps of Engineer, EPA, urban drainage. Also, stormwater utility fees is being recommended, and drainage basin impact fees that we're currently utilizing. We've kind of talked about all of this. I'm going to skip on by. Then, looking at city facilities, as the population grows and annexations occur and infrastructure improvements occur, that requires additional staff to maintain and service. And so as those, as the staff increases, we also have to increase certain facilities. These are the ones that have been identified for needing to be improved by 2020. There's three projects. They total 14.4 million. Then, turning to leisure services, the golf course, open space, parks, recreation activities and trails are all essential for a quality community. Looking at the 2007 Strategic Plan for Recreation Services, that was based on demographic information, existing facilities, and the proximity of facilities to residents and surveys. At that time, trails were identified as the highest priority by citizen survey. So this is a list of those priorities. Trails, outdoor and indoor aquatic facilities, indoor fitness and exercise facilities in the North, natural areas, wildlife habitat, small neighborhood and large community parks, improvements to existing parks. So those were all listed. We have a backlog of projects, and those are identified based on the criteria of the strategic plan. Now, the C3 Vision Comprehensive Plan identified future population growth as being 1.95%, so a little less than 2% per year compared to our historic growth of 13% per year. As population grows, that creates demand for additional services. So whatever that population growth is in the next number of years, that's going to either relieve the pressure or increase the pressure for adding additional leisure facilities and services. This is a list of needed projects. Again, I'm going to skip on by. Other than, no, I'll skip on by. Talk about it a little bit more later. Needed golf improvements, those total about 3.7 million. Some of the observations about these projects is we have some funding that we're using, namely Adams County Open Space and lottery revenue for various trail connections. We may also be using some parks impact fee revenue as well as grants. Grants have been utilized throughout recent history. Some of the Buffalo Run Golf Course improvements can be funded from golf revenues, but we're going to continue to work to secure outside funding, and we also need your guidance in terms of priority rank on the projects. Here's some suggested criteria for priority ranking. What can we afford to operate and maintain? What is not driven by or contingent on future development? What projects were listed as priorities in the strategic plan? And what can be phased and funded? There was some discussion last year about a recreation center in the North area. There's two major issues with that. One is funding the capital cost, estimated to be at least 20 million, and then funding the annual operation and maintenance. That can run, for example, using our existing facility as an example, can run 940,000 per year, and the revenues generated in the facility only partially offset that operating cost. So we may be, we may be looking at a net cost of anywhere from a half a million to 800,000 per year to fund such a facility. And currently, we don't have either annual operating and maintenance money that can do that, and we also don't have a source of money identified for funding the capital cost. So then, looking at these projects, this is a slide I skipped over earlier, but it did not include the cost estimate. So focusing on this one, Loop Trails north of 96th Avenue, that's a summary of the next three lines there, the O'Brien Canal Trail and the Second Creek Trail, as well as additional loop and neighborhood connections. So that total is almost $8 million for that. And then you see all the rest of the projects that are listed there. Total of all of those projects identified is 64.2 million. As I mentioned, we can't fund all of that. Parks impact fee can only cover part of those costs, and also park impact fee revenue only comes in over many years as development occurs because it's a fee that's put on each building permit. So we need alternate funding sources. Here are some possible funding sources. Again, Adams County Open Space, park impact fee and lottery revenue. But after looking at those first three listings, those first three priorities, where also with golf projects, we can use golf revenues. After that, it's kind of like, I'm not sure where we get the additional funding from. So again, we need alternate funding sources identified. In addition, then you have the operating and maintenance costs of any of those improvements. A park can range from $6,600 per acre for a community park up to 7,190 for a neighborhood park. Smaller the park, the more the cost per acre is. So those would have to be factored into our long-range planning as well. Some recommendations, what we need to do is set project priorities, establish phasing plans, and continue funding, or pursuing funding partnerships, and explore alternative funding sources. It might be fees, it might be a metropolitan district, it might be a park and recreation district, it might be a tax increase. Whatever it is, there's going to have to be additional revenue. And obviously, that's something that you would need to discuss as we look at all the fiscal policies and strategies. Then, turning to transportation, these were identified as priority roadways, and you can see that there's some really big projects. Even just part of Tower Road would cost 30 million. Then we have three 96th Avenue projects, two projects on 88th Avenue, as well as some smaller roads. I'll talk about that in a little bit. Again, the improvements alone are more than we can fund, given our existing revenues and existing funding sources. Even a modified list of projects is going to cost more than we can fund in the next 10 years. Now, many of those projects are also dependent on other agencies. Again, population growth creates demand for roadway improvements, so that's going to be a factor, depending on the level of population growth in the, in the coming 10 years. In 2010, the council adopted the transportation plan as part of the C3 Vision process. That plan set priorities for projects, and that was a community-driven process, and it also set goals for multimodal transportation improvements. Now, all of our roadway improvements do include bicycle, pedestrian safety. They integrate with regional transit, and they address traffic congestion and safety. So it's more than just moving cars along the road that, that are addressed when those improvements are engineered. Here's the location of all of the projects that are, you know, needing to be funded at one time or another, and you can see they're all over the city. Here are the high-priority projects that were listed in the plan. You can see these again, Tower Road, Highway 85, 96th Avenue. And of course, when you look on the right-hand side, you can see the agency that we have to interact with and who a lot of these projects are dependent on. So it's not only, for, for Tower Road, it's not only us, but it's also Denver. For US 85, of course, it's Colorado Department of Transportation. Also, I've asterisked a number of the ones that are labeled "city," and that's where city investment is going to need to be driven by development. I-76 and 88th Avenue interchange, that's both Adams County and C-Dot, to give you an example. So a lot of interaction with other agencies, and a lot of them don't have funding for projects. Here are the medium priority projects. Here are the medium priority projects. And then we have long-term priority projects, and we have local impact projects. So looking at all of that and realizing, okay, we can't fund all of that, other agencies don't have money, what I did was I started narrowing it down using some of these criteria of, okay, what's dependent on other agencies? So obviously, we're going to have to work with Adams County, City of Brighton, City and County of Denver, Colorado Department of Transportation. But their funding is limited, and when they do get funding, we're going to have to be flexible in terms of how we respond. So the criteria is, what do we control? And what I did was identified projects exclusively under our jurisdiction. Also, what's not driven by or contingent on development? What projects were listed as priorities in the C-Three Vision Transportation Plan? What can be phased and funded? So here's a list of possible projects that we've identified. Tower Road, Ninety-Sixth Avenue, Eighty-Eighth Avenue, and then local impact projects, those are typically smaller projects, but Seventy-second Avenue, and then we have signal system improvements that need to be made each year. Rosemary Street, Colorado Boulevard, that's a big-ticket item again, and then Fifty-Sixth Avenue over on the west side. The total of those eleven initial projects is a paltry one hundred and seventy-two million, actually, one hundred and seventy-three million. We can't fund all of that in the next ten years. Road impact fees will only cover part of that. So again, we're going to need alternative funding sources. Then looking at the total of all of those projects, drainage facilities, transportation, and the leisure services, the ten-year total identified is two hundred and seventy-one, almost two hundred and seventy-two million. We have approximately forty million that we expect unless things change at the state level in terms of pass-through revenues. Those are the transportation tax, which is a sales tax that comes through Adams County, as well as some of the other funding sources coming through the state, such as Adams, or, wow, Adams County Open Space comes from Adams County, but lottery revenue comes from the state. So those are the pass-through revenues that we've been able to utilize. However, lottery funds in Adams County Open Space, I would point out, we've been using primarily for upgrading existing facilities, and that was done with council direction last year. So are there other ways we could pay for this? Could we use bonds? Well, sure. Bonds are legally available to us. We could use revenue bonds, or we could use general obligation bonds. Now note, all of those have to be voted by the voters. We can't do that without voter approval. So here are some of the pros and cons of city issuing bonds versus the Northern Infrastructure GID issuing bonds. I'm not going to belabor that, and the reason for that is, we really can't do it. The city has sixty-seven point three million in general obligation bond debt capacity, so that's how much we could go out and ask the voters to authorize. However, we already have fifty-eight point eight million in outstanding revenue bonds. We also have certificates of participation out there that aren't legally called debt, but the rating agency looks at that and says, oh, you have a lease obligation, where you're going to have to pay that off over thirty years. So we're going to look at it as if it's kind of like debt. So the rating agency, they have us at an double-A right now, which is decent, but they're saying our debt level is high for our size, and that's true, looking at other cities. So realistically, the city cannot issue any more debt. So how about the General Improvement District? Could it do it? Again, legally, yes, it could. But again, we already have ninety point one million in outstanding general obligation bonds. The mill levy rate is twenty-seven mils. Now, the northern range property tax burden is double that of the historic city, and that's primarily due to the General Improvement District and the metro districts, which were set up by the developers. So realistically, the General Improvement District also cannot issue more debt. Here are some potential funding sources, and I emphasize potential. Refuge collection fee, we talked about one point nine million. Stormwater utility fee, three point four million. Increased impact fees, that would only take council approval, and for every five hundred homes, that would generate about a million dollars, depending on the size of the increase. A sales tax increase, that would require voter approval, and at a half a cent, it would generate four point three million dollars. Property tax increase, again, needs voter approval. One mil would generate about six hundred and seventy-five thousand. Sales tax on food, again, that would require voter approval. At the current rate of three and a half percent, that would generate over two million dollars a year. Head tax, Denver has that, it would require voter approval. At five dollars a paycheck, we estimate that would be three point nine million. Again, so these are options. We could form new GID. In fact, I would recommend that we form three of them, but those require property owner approval. Potentially, you could generate five million a year from each GID once it's up and running and there's development within that General Improvement District. You could form a recreation district, but again, that would require voter approval. To fund the entire Parks and Recreation Department would require a mill levy of nine point three mils compared to our present mill levy of three point two eight. You could do a toll on Tower Road, that would take council approval. At twenty-five cents a vehicle, that's one point four million. Admissions tax has been talked about before and submitted to the voters once before. At eight percent, that'd be over five hundred thousand. Carbon-based fuel tax at three percent, assuming voter approval, that'd be four point six million a year, four point seven million. Again, these are options, not recommending any one specifically. Just looking at the property taxes, digging into that a little bit more, comparing the north range to the historic city, there's a lot of stuff on here, and I'm just going to try to cut through to get to the chase on this. Assuming a hundred thousand of market value, that would be an assessed value of seven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. The taxes then from like Range View Library at their current mill levy would be twenty-nine dollars a year. The cities, and this was at our 2011 rate, we did a temporary mill levy reduction to comply with Tabor to do a refunding to everyone, that would be twenty-five dollars fifty-two cents. Adams County, at their rate, that'd be almost two hundred and fourteen dollars. School District Twenty-Seven J in the north area, that would generate three hundred and sixty-four dollars. The Adams fourteen here in the historic city would generate three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. SAC West Water District, approximately twenty-five dollars a year. Flood control, urban drainage flood control, four hundred and, I mean, I'm sorry, four dollars and sixteen cents. And then they also have a South Platte Drainage District Subdistrict, which is forty-two cents. The Northern Infrastructure GID, that's only in the north range, at twenty-seven mils on a hundred thousand market value, that would generate two hundred and fifteen dollars. And then there's a metro district in the reunion area, they're at sixty-nine point four mils, that would generate five hundred and fifty-two dollars forty-two cents. And then they also have a sub-district at two mils, which would generate fifteen dollars ninety-two cents. And then you have the Fire District at four point three mils, that generates thirty-four dollars twenty-three cents. So you can see on the bottom line there, the total in the north range, it would be almost fifteen hundred dollars per hundred thousand of market value compared to in the historic city, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars on that same hundred thousand of value. Here's how it breaks out on a percentage basis. Again, just showing the relative percentages. In the historic city, the large amount, majority, forty, almost fifty-two percent goes to School District fourteen. Adams County gets about thirty-one percent. The Fire District, four point nine six. Library District, four point two. And then the city gets about three point seven percent. And then the north range, the largest amount goes to the metro district at thirty-seven point three percent. School District gets twenty-four point five, almost twenty-four point six percent. GID gets fourteen and a half percent. Adams County gets fourteen point four seven. Fire District gets two point three. Library District, one point nine seven. And then the city gets one point seven three. So again, just shows you the relative percentages that go to the different areas. So we use the two-dollar bill for the north range since the tax burden is almost twice what the historic city is, and that's how they compare in terms of percentages. Looking at how our property tax compares to other metro cities, we're at three point two eight normally, and the average of these metro cities is seven mils. So we're less than half of other metropolitan cities. Sales and use tax, our rate is three and a half percent. The average of Colorado cities over nineteen thousand population is three point three percent, so we're right at the average. The sales and use tax provides over seventy percent of our general fund revenue. We exempt the food-for-home consumption from tax. Some cities do tax groceries. This is an estimate based on the retail analysis that was done several years back, and this shows on a percentage basis where that sales and use tax, yeah, where the sales and use tax comes from. In 2010, residential generated about twenty percent of that total, whereas business and industry generated seventy-five percent. The other approximately five percent came from construction. Now, you notice, construction has varied dramatically over the years. Two thousand and four, it peaked out at almost twenty-eight percent, or twenty-seven percent, I'm sorry. And as the, you know, construction market dropped off, obviously, our use tax from construction dropped way off as well. When we did presentation to the Quality Community Initiative Task Force, they asked, well, what do you typically see from a retail space? And it's all over the map, quite frankly. We did a sample of retail stores, and it can range from a penny per square foot up to thirty-four dollars thirty-eight cents per square foot in revenue to the city. And to give you some examples, a twelve-hundred square-foot hair salon may generate about a thousand dollars a year, whereas a twelve-hundred square-foot fast-food restaurant can generate seventeen thousand per year. And then looking at two that generate the same amount of money, you can have a twenty-five hundred square-foot fast-food restaurant generating eighty-six thousand per year compared to a twenty-five thousand square-foot retail store generating eighty-seven thousand per year. So you really can't draw any conclusions that, oh, if we got, you know, these retail stores, we would have this much revenue. It depends on the type of retail. Industry, we sampled, also has a range, anywhere from a penny per square foot to a dollar forty-two per square foot. Now, the reason industrial adds up is there's so many, so many square foot of industrial out there, and so that's why that number is quite significant. Using some of those numbers to do economic analysis, our 2011 service cost per residential unit was just over two thousand dollars per residential unit. Now, assuming our build-out up to the western boundary of DIA at thirty-six thousand units at build-out, the total cost for providing residential service would be seventy-three million dollars. Now, property tax from those same thirty-six thousand residential units, assuming a market value of two hundred and fifty thousand average, which is extremely high, that would be generating two point three, two million, three hundred and fifty thousand at the most. So that means we would have to cover another seventy point eight million out of sales and use tax to be able to provide services to all of the residential units. Assuming sales per square foot of retail at two hundred and fifteen dollars per square foot, that would generate sales tax per square foot of seven dollars and fifty-three cents to the city. So dividing that seventy point eight million by that seven dollars and fifty-three cents, we would need nine point four million square feet of commercial retail space to pay for the services for residential. So here's some conclusions I'm drawing from all of this. We can't fund our CIP with city debt or general improvement district debt, the existing general improvement district. Residential doesn't pay for itself, and even doubling the city property tax would only generate another two million dollars per year. Retail alone will never support the residential. Part of that is the fact that we have reduced possibility for major retail due to the Prairie Center to the north and the Stapleton, Northfield Development, thank you. So, and even if we could put in major retail, there's no way we could get to nine point four million square feet of it in order to support all of those services. So we obviously have to have additional industrial to be able to continue supporting the services that we have. There are some viable fiscal options. You know, sales and use tax increase would generate significant revenue, and I'm talking only from the standpoint, what would generate a lot of money? These would generate money. Head tax, new general improvement districts or metropolitan districts, refuse collection fee, establishing a stormwater utility fee. The thing is, we're going to need a combination of a number of these revenue sources to be able to fund all of those projects. What it comes down to is, how are we going to accomplish the council's priorities? You know, we need to build a quality community for a lifetime, but we're going to need council direction to build that action plan. The 2004 Long Range Financial Plan identified over a billion dollars of capital needs, and that was just to build out to the west boundary of DIA. Didn't include going around the north side of DIA. We've funded almost two hundred and fifty million in the past ten years, so we've taken a big chunk out of that, but the question is, you know, what quarter do we build in the next ten years? Somebody asked, well, why another quarter? Again, I'm assuming we're trying to take care of these in bite-sized chunks and take care of it so that we're not left with a billion dollars due to inflation in some future year. So the question is, how do we prepare for those remaining years, and how do we get to that goal? This is all for your provoking thoughts and discussion at your retreat, but are there any questions now?
Councilman Moreno?
Well, thanks, Roger. Of all your presentations, I'd say this is my least favorite, but thanks for that sobering reality of where we're at. I had a couple of questions from your presentation. How much is currently in the park impact fee fund?
There's a couple million in there.
Okay. And then you mentioned that we already have fifty-eight point eight million in outstanding revenue bonds. Can you break that out a little bit for me about which projects those came from, that outstanding bond revenue came from?
Yeah, the bulk of that is for the Quebec and Fifty-Sixth Avenue improvements. And I'll note that fifty-eight point eight million, that's actually lower than what we legally have out there, but Cronkey is committed to paying off twelve million of the Quebec and Fifty-Sixth Avenue bonds. So it's Quebec, Fifty-Sixth Avenue, and then also, we had a, we previously had a 2002 bond issue which refinanced what was issued for the recreation center expansion and MSC construction, but we defeesed those bonds, and so those are off our books at this point. So we're just left with Quebec and Fifty-Sixth Avenue.
Okay. And the legal limit you said is how much?
Sixty-seven point three million.
Sixty-seven point three.
And that's in general obligation bonds.
In the property tax breakout, there were some line items for urban drainage funding, urban drainage funding stream?
Yes.
How do those projects differ from the stormwater utility and the projects that would be needed to be accomplished there?
They use their funding in the entire, I want to say Adams County area, but it's within their district, and so they will match projects that we do. So sometimes they're a supplemental funding source for us, but they do not fund, you know, the majority of what we have to build. They only are a partial supplementary source.
Great. Do you have any data about which cities tax groceries?
I can find that. I don't have it offhand.
If you could have that for our retreat, that'd be great. And then, what other communities have a head tax other than Denver?
That's the only one I'm aware of.
Okay.
Brighton does food tax. Not head tax, food tax.
Food tax, okay. Thanks, I guess.
Mr. Douglas?
Thanks, Roger, for your presentation. I deal with groceries on a daily basis, and it all depends on, as far as if it's a tip tax or new development, all that, where they charge for the tax. Boulder charges for tax on sugary products, snacks, gum. Boulder charges for tax on sugary, sugary products, snacks, gum. But as far as groceries, there's no tax, and that's just mainly, it's a, it's part of incentive. On your presentation, some of these just didn't line up because your priority of drainage improvement, on our sheet says forty-three million is the grand total, and on your sheet it said seventy-three million. And then, let's see, there was, I know head tax, you had fifteen on ours, but yours at five dollars for head tax.
Right. I've updated these slides and sent those out to you earlier this afternoon. The reason for the dollar difference on the drainage project was due to an updated number, you know, they're continuing to study the improvements that are needed, and some of these numbers date back to a study that was done back in nineteen ninety-eight.
Okay.
And so obviously those are out of date, but they've also identified additional needs because as you defer maintenance, you have additional capital costs. And so the primary cost increase there was due to, if I can get to it, the Irondale Gulch, yeah, Irondale Gulch. That, on my original number, was eight million dollars. It's now forty-three point four million.
Okay, and as far as head tax, I don't think...
I just divided it, because originally I had understood that Denver had a fifteen-dollar per payroll tax, and they said, "No, it's not that amount." So I chopped it back to five bucks just to use that.
It's usually not a weekly, not a monthly thing on the head tax, because I know, working in Denver, I don't see that on a weekly basis as far as, I mean, a monthly basis far as head tax, it's on a certain time that you hit with that.
Again, these are just illustrations of what it would generate. None of this is recommended, oh, we ought to do this.
Right.
That's partly, partly that's to come from council direction, but also that Quality Community Initiative is going to be providing you with recommendations, you know, to further your decision-making.
Okay, yeah, because the comparison to property tax, you know, it's a big difference, one hundred and eighty-five mill levy versus eighty-five. And how do you balance, you know, that's another thing too, how do you balance that out? I mean, if you're already been hitting the north with huge tax as far as mill levy, and then you get to the southern town, the historical part of Commerce City, which, you know, been here for a long time, how do you balance that out? So it's going to be a big challenge for us for the, for the retreat and for this budget. This is, this is huge. So, thank you.
Certainly. Again, I want to emphasize, these are not being recommended, these are simply food for thought. Okay, this is what you could generate doing this type, just for your information.
Mr. Moreno?
Roger, on the stormwater, the undeveloped basins you said can be fee-funded through development impact fees. Would that cover the entire, entire cost of those improvements that need to be made to undeveloped basins?
It will, it will cover the capital costs, it does not cover the maintenance costs.
Okay. Good to know. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Brian?
This kind of a presentation usually scares the heck out of everybody in the audience, scares the heck out of everybody sitting up here, and I know these are all real numbers. Given the economy, we're going to be able to do what we can do. Number one priority for this council is maintaining services. I don't want any of the residents to walk away from here thinking, "Oh, my God, the trash, trash pickup's going away, they're going to increase our taxes." And we know in this kind of an economy, especially for those folks like myself that live further north, that are paying GID fees and things of that nature, and then even worse when you get into the neighborhoods that have the metro district taxes and the effects those metro districts have, to try to look at putting a tax issue on the ballot is like putting a noose around your neck. I mean, that stuff, I don't, I don't want the public leaving here thinking, "What are they going to do?" We're going to do what we can do to maintain and to keep the city whole. As far as services are our priority, and I don't, I don't expect a tax increase, I wouldn't say it isn't going to happen, but I don't expect a tax increase to come forward in this economy. We are going to have to do some serious, some serious taking a look at our expenditures to make sure that we can continue to meet the required effect of our, our regular services provided to the residents. So, you know, just from an honest perspective from a government, yeah, we're, we're not doing terrible, we're not doing great, but we're somewhere average, and we do have some big-ticket items and big-ticket desires this council would like to see. And when folks look at, "How come you don't get Tower Road done? I want a rec center, I want..." You know, and growing up in this part of the community, it took, it took us years and years. I mean, we didn't have a rec center until I was just, just on my way out of high school, and that was a big-ticket item for the residents when Commerce City was a smaller community. And to take on those kind of indebtedness, of course we want to do those things for our community. But as elected officials, we have to sit up here and take a look at the hard stuff that you guys just got to see of prioritizing. And keep in mind that the priority number one is to maintain services for all of our residents in our, in our community. The other piece of this that you didn't get to see is that Jim Hayes has a huge job ahead of him, because as Director of Economic Development, we're expecting him to find a way to eat a lot of this debt up with bringing in new businesses and improving our existing businesses so that those folks can feel comfortable about being in Commerce City and increasing revenue streams. So I don't want anybody to walk away from here thinking, "Oh, my God, what's going on with Commerce City?" We're in great shape, but this is his job as a financial manager to show us what potentially, if we want to move forward with these projects, what we're looking at for debt. I don't want you to walk out of here scared what happens to my services. So feel comfortable leaving here. Your, your streetlights will be on, your roads will be plowed, your trash will be picked up, and until that happens, don't, don't freak out, okay?
Who does freak out?
Thanks, Roger.
Brian, you have something to say?
Just wanted to emphasize some points that the mayor made and some points that Mr. Tinklinburg made before moving on to the next presentation. I think of all the presentations leading up to council's retreat, it's Roger's overview of the long-range financial plan discussions that are the most helpful. They help provide kind of a broader context and set the background, because I think a lot of what you're going to discuss at your retreat has an impact on either the revenue side or the expense side. And the city council began wrestling with these challenging issues last spring. As a result of starting to get council's arms around the challenges ahead, council did form the Quality Community Initiative Stakeholder Committee, which is a group of businesspeople, developers, residents, who've been meeting since, since last fall to start to break down this, this big task of how to pay for these significant capital improvements, and then how to generate enough revenue to be able to maintain these things over the long term. So you're not alone in trying to, to sort this, these, these challenges out, but I do expect that it will likely be a pretty prominent topic as you discuss which your priorities are towards the end of the month. Certainly there's, there's going to be a need to prioritize the chief needs of the city going forward, but as the mayor mentioned, compared to a lot of communities in the metro Denver area, Commerce City's in pretty good shape. Our budgets are in very good shape, we do continue to provide a high level of services to our community, and yet our, our tax rates are fairly modest compared to other cities. You do have a very capable staff that's working very hard on these things, and we will continue to try and provide good, up-to-date information to, to help you. Roger mentioned paying for stormwater facilities long-term. Last year, as part of council's discussion of long-range financial needs, city council did discuss the option of creating a utility to pay for our stormwater needs. Related to that, city council put in the two thousand and twelve budget some funds to allow staff to begin determining how to implement such a program. Here tonight and the next presentation is actually Greg Clements and Darren Sterling to provide an update to council on our efforts to develop a utility to fund stormwater improvements. So with that, unless you have other questions for Roger?
One thing for you, Brian, is a good thing we're doing the bike trail stuff, because if things don't get better, you guys in management staff may be biking around this town instead of having city vehicles. So keep that in mind, Roger, as you keep doing these updates, we might have to go to bikes. But as long as we're doing our, our services to the residents, we're in good shape. All right, Darren and Greg, you want to come up and do your presentation?
Roger, there's one more question from Mr. Moreno.
Roger? Sorry, just one more question. Roger, you mentioned that in the two thousand and four long-range financial plan, you called out over a billion in projects that needed to be completed, but we managed to fund two hundred and fifty million of that. Was that largely funded through those bonds that you mentioned?
Yes, combination of bonds and the certificates of participation, as well as the annual capital improvement program that we've been able to fund, particularly in years past. You know, we haven't been as successful in recent years. The only bad thing is, I've gotten really tired of talking to the engineering staff because they've told me now that, that one billion dollars, even though we've funded two hundred and fifty million of it, Darren told me that inflation has probably caused another two hundred and fifty million, so we're back to a billion. Like I said, I'm tired of talking to them.
Yeah.
And Roger, of the, of the three funding streams that you mentioned, the certificates, the bonds, I imagine that the reserved funding for the capital improvement project from the city, from general funds, was the smallest of those, or no?
If you looked at the entire ten-year period, yeah, it would be the smallest of those, but it was significant because at one time, we had a lot of use tax money coming in from construction, and we were able to apply that to funding projects.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, Greg, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. The stormwater utility, utility fee implementation update, as Brian mentioned, I'm going to provide some background information for the council's information, and then I'll turn it over to Darren Sterling. And Matt Wiederspan is driving this train here. He's also our project manager on the project, so he's got a lot to do here in the next few months. I do want to note before I get into this that there have been changes made in the presentation from the packet. So we will be sending out the revised packet first thing in the morning for your information. These are the items that will be covered in this presentation. Introduction and overview, which I'll have a part of, the city's needs, a funding solution, next steps and discussion. Please note that the purpose of this is for council's information tonight. No action is requested, but there will be requests for action later in the year as we follow through. However, we welcome any questions or issues that come forward. We want to be able to answer all those in the process of answering this whole issue. Thanks to Roger for his overview of drainage and his long-range financial plan update earlier. He covered a lot in there, so hopefully we don't duplicate much. The previous councils identified the need for a possible stormwater utility fee, and we funded through the city council's direction a stormwater funding study. Final report was issued October, August one, two thousand and eleven. And at the same time, I send the updated presentation, I'll send a copy of this, it's twenty-eight pages, and it provides more detailed information. The consultant on this project from the beginning is AMEC. John Sorensen and Carrie McCray have been working with us on this from the start. They continue to work on it, and we made a previous city council presentation, which some of you were present for, on August twenty-second, two thousand and eleven, of that report. And then subsequently, the council passed the budget, which included two hundred thousand dollars for implementation of a stormwater utility fee based on this feasibility study. The long-range financial plan, as Roger explained, included a recommendation to establish a stormwater utility. Based on the drainage maintenance, capital needs, and NPDES requirements, the need is there for a stormwater utility funded at about three point four million dollars. This will fund ongoing operations in the general fund, including NPDES, pays for major maintenance, and it also provides for drainage infrastructure needs in the historic city. This is a revenue stream source. Brian mentioned the expenditure side and the revenue side, this is a revenue side issue. There is a direct relationship between the cost of providing the services and the infrastructure and the fee, so there is that nexus provided. It addresses both the capital infrastructure funding gap and that knotty little issue of cost for ongoing operations and maintenance. If, in order to be, have this in place by the first of January of two thousand and thirteen next year, there's a lot of work to do. Our real deadline is November first, two thousand and twelve, because we have to get all of that, this work done in order to get it set up. We need to prepare a database of every parcel in the city, prepare a rate structure, provide public outreach and education, which is very important. We're working closely with our communications division on that as we speak. And we have to develop an administrative and billing system. As I mentioned earlier, we will be following up. Darren will give you a schedule in order to meet this deadline with request to adopt a stormwater utility fee ordinance, followed with a resolution establishing the fee. And I'll turn it over at this time to Darren.
Thank you, Greg, and good evening, Mayor and members of council. Next, I'm going to go through in a little bit of detail the stormwater utility as we've proceeded so far. We'll be covering each one of these items throughout the rest of the presentation. The main thing to remember about the EPA water quality requirements is this is an unfunded mandate dating back to about nineteen eighty-nine. These restrictions or standards are placed on us, and we do have to follow through, and we do have regular monitoring going on with the state. Use of the stormwater utility, it'll be complete, the implementation of a stormwater utility is an additional funding source to what we've already got in place and actually substitute some of them. It's similar to a water sewer utility and even XL. So it's based on consumption. You consume water, you send water to the sewage treatment plant, you use electricity. That's what the, the concept is based on, is water falls on the ground and it runs off, and it needs to be handled throughout our system. So it is a consumption-based fee. All revenue will be collected and dedicated to the stormwater program through, through our ongoing inspections and our capital improvements and our maintenance. Fair and equitable, basically what that means is, this is based on hard surface area, which contributes to the bulk of the runoff. So those hard surfaces are roofs, driveways, sidewalks, any place or any area that's driven on. All that area compacts and the water runs off. Some of the areas aren't paved, they collect sediment and contribute to greater, greater cleanup needs that we need to provide in terms of water quality ponds and things like Water quality regulations, there are six minimum standards, or minimum measures is what they call them with the EPA, that are contained within our stormwater permit. And so these are to conduct public education and outreach. We do this through press articles and stories and various things like that. Public involvement and participation... Public involvement and participation. We've been working with the schools to do some various activities to try and educate the kids on what stormwater quality is and what we're doing to try and improve it and maintain it. Track and eliminate illicit discharges. This has been a big one. We've had several incidents over the last several years. One of them was quite large with cooking oil that was being discharged across somebody's property. Worked with the EPA and everything on all of that. We have some lesser ones with some diesel spills and some oil spills, but those are all illicit discharges that we've been notified readily by the public and gone after those and addressed those. Review of construction projects and assure compliance through inspection. This is an ongoing thing that we do on a daily basis. We've got procedures in place to conduct those inspections and ensure that we're meeting our requirements. Implement permanent best management practices. Within a lot of the developments, the newer developments, anyway, we've got water quality features that are included with any of those. And so those are required to be there. They're supposed to certify that they're there. And then on an annual basis, we do some sort of follow-up to ensure that they're being maintained, kept cleaned out, and functioning the way they're intended. Complete pollution prevention and good housekeeping practices. On an annual basis, we go through and look at all the different city facilities where there are chemicals and things like that stored outside and make sure that they're being stored properly and maintained properly. And so we do a lot of follow-up on that. Regulations continue to increase. EPA is coming up with new standards all the time. Their next round is out for review. They have numerical standards that are now tied to the regulations, which equates to increased cost, not only for the city but also for the development community because you're going to have to test the water to make sure that you're meeting these numerical standards. The fee will help the city meet the national estate requirements for preventing stormwater pollution and protect water quality. Capital maintenance. Roger told you a lot of the capital improvements and capital maintenance, it's all kind of, it becomes blurred as you go through time because you've got new systems you've got to establish, you've got old systems you've got to maintain, and some of those old systems need to be replaced. We'll be addressing flooding problems around the city. One of the most notably is Fairfax Park. We're looking at really replacing that outfall down below Fairfax to be able to drain that water in a little bit shorter period of time and decrease the flooding that we've experienced over the years adjacent to the north. Most of our improvements initially are being targeted for First, Second, and Third Creek, Fernal Trail, which is the Fairfax outfall, and then floodplain preservation. Working with the developers, we're preserving floodplain. We're also acquiring floodplain in some locations. We're working on a project right now with parks to acquire a prime piece of floodplain that we need to take care of. And through this preservation, we're not going to have to go in and do major improvements like we are in Irondale and First Creek, where none of the floodplain has really been preserved. There's no drainage channel that's established to carry off that runoff. So if we can take care of it up front, it's better for us on the back end and fewer improvements that are needed. Maintaining the existing system, like I said, we'll be replacing some existing systems that are deteriorating. They're not only just old and worn out, but they're undersized in some situations, so we'll, of course, be going in with larger improvements. Upkeep and cleaning of existing channels, pipes, streets, and structures. This includes channel stabilization. As these areas develop, more and more runoff is developed, and so that gets into what we call a channel cutting. If you notice over on Second Creek, for example, some of those channels are beginning to cut down deeper and deeper. What we want to do is be able to go in there, put in drop structures at some point at the appropriate time, and halt that erosion in there. And that's something that's even common down in Sand Creek. We've got some very old drop structures in there that are quite large. They need to be replaced. Recently, there was one, probably about four or five years ago, that failed right there by Quebec. Urban Drainage and CDOT went in and replaced that. So those sorts of things are what we'd be working on upkeeping. In the cleaning, another thing that needs to be done on a regular basis and much more frequent than what we do now, they're set up to enhance water quality. So we've got little drops inside of them to collect that sediment as it falls. It's easier to pick it up out of there than it is to go inside that pipe and clean it. And so, but we need to clean that out on a regular basis because when they fill up, it doesn't do anything for us anymore. Street sweeping, that's another one of the maintenance things that we do that's eligible for the MPDS program because we're keeping the streets clean, we're keeping the sediments and that from getting into the storm sewer system. This little chart here represents what our existing costs are today and what our annual expenditures need to be in order to meet the program requirements. You can see that we're not, we're only doing about a third of the work that we should be doing, and what we're proposing is something that gets us to where we need to be. 3.3 million, 3.4 million is what we project. That takes care of really the three things, the MPDS requirements, the maintenance requirements, and capital. Based on the total in previous area in the city, so what we did is we went through and looked at all the properties, and we've got a basic idea of how much of those areas are covered by impermeable hard surface that we talked about earlier. And based on that, divide that into the 3.4 million, and that gets us back to the approximately $6 a month for the single-family residents. That's, we did it that way because that's one of those easy things to understand with a house. Everybody's got one of those or lives in someplace like that. And so the $6 a month is something we can get a handle on. The other, the rest of this number is covered by the retail, industrial, commercial properties that are throughout the city. This chart here represents all the jurisdictions throughout the Front Range, Colorado that have storm drainage utilities. There's 24 of them. And you'll notice that Brighton, Northland, Westminster, Federal Heights, Aurora, and Denver are all on here. One of the immediate questions is, what's the difference in the cost? And when you go from the left-hand side, in those cities, they've chosen to only cover portions of some of these fees. So they may be covering the MPDS program only, or they may be doing maintenance, or they probably aren't doing capital, but probably the first two. And then as you move towards the middle, you start getting into when they're beginning to cover everything. And as you can see, as you move further over there to the right, you get all the way down to Fort Collins, which is up there around $14 per month, and they're doing a lot of capital improvement with their money. We're recommending in the, right at $6, based on what we're seeing our need is. And as you can see, that fits right in with a number of our neighboring jurisdictions. Should be noted also that Adams County is in the process of developing a storm drainage utility. They are also using AMEC as their consultant on this, and we don't have any information yet on what kind of fee they're looking at, but they're continuing to work with the county commissioners on that. Moving on to billing recommendations. We looked at several options for billing the stormwater utility. We looked at developing our own city billing system, using the water district as a possibility, and using the Adams County Treasurer's Office. The best option seems to be a little bit of a hybrid, where we'd be using the Adams County Treasurer's Office to do the billing for us. It's, the cost is really low compared to getting into a regular billing system of our own. And then we'd also have to do a little bit of billing on our own with things such as schools, churches, the fire district, things like that that are nonprofit, which don't normally get a tax bill. The fee would still show up on the tax bill, just so you know, as a fee, it's not a tax. And this is already being done in Arapahoe County, so we know it can be done and we're working towards that with Adams County at this time. But, and then the other thing, as far as our own billing would go, is when we have a house that's finished during the year, we need to pick that up on the billing. So they will be picked up in the billing for that year, and then when we get into the cycle, they'll be dropped in and that will be just handled as normal. Next steps, public information. We'll be adding information to the website, working with both our consultant and communications to develop that information. And that would also cover the basic stormwater awareness campaign. Included in that is, we'll be at both of the outreaches this summer, handing out information and trying to educate the public on what's going on. We'll be refining the revenue and fee information to provide more accuracy. That's all tied up with developing the database and getting into, actually figuring out how much of the commercial, retail, industrial sites are hard surface and which parts aren't, and refining those calculations that way. We'll be working on the rate structure, which is tied into that hard surface and determining what that incremental fee is, just say, say a per square foot basis, how that number works out so then we can apply that as we move along. Billing system and details like that, we'll be working with Roger on setting up that system to get through the various entities that we need to charge. This is a little bit of the timeline for implementation. Some of the detail in here is, we'll be coming back before you in, with updates in April and June. We've got a ordinance that we'd be bringing before you in July for consideration. And then in August, when we do the second reading on the ordinance, we'd also be presenting a resolution on setting the B structure, the rate schedule. And that's all in preparation for delivering the billing to the Adams County Treasurer by November 1. If we miss that November 1 deadline, then we got to get in line for the next year or do our own billing and do a crunch on getting that out. So it's very important that we get through this process and have as little as we can in terms of holdups. And then after the 1st of the year, we would start with the individual billings as we go So in conclusion, we'd like to hear from you what concerns you may have, so that we can address those in future presentations and updates. And with that, we'll open it up for questions.
Mr. Moreno, you have any comments, questions? Your lights on?
A couple of questions. You said for convenience, using the county treasurer's office, I imagine that the fee would be tagged then to the property tax bill.
Yes, it would be added on to the property tax bill.
Would we be required to pay the county for that service?
Yes, that service works out to be about, is 1.5% of our total billing. When we looked at the billing on the internal city system, it would cost us around 4% to develop our own billing. So there's a definite cost differential there that seems to be positive for us.
Okay. And I noticed that, you know, based on the timeline, we're nearly halfway through the public education and messaging campaign timeline. What kind of public education has occurred so far?
So far, that's lagging a little bit, and we're working with communications to get that back on track. We've been working on a plan. We're getting into implementation of that plan now.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, one other question, or that you asked earlier of Roger, is on the urban drainage and what kind of dollars are available there. They collect on about $1 million a year for capital improvements within Adams County. The money they collect has to be spent within the county that they collect the money. So there's about $1 million a year, and we get to compete with all of our neighboring jurisdictions for that money. And this is just limited to the western portion that's within the Dr. Cog boundaries.
Mr. Douglas?
Thanks, Earl. The presentation. You talked about the mandate. When's the date on that for this to be?
The initial mandate came in 1988, when the EPA enacted the MPDS program. And then in about 19, either 1993 or 2003, one of those two, we actually had to get our, put all of our plan together and go get our stormwater permit through the state. And so in that timeframe, we, I forget which is the exact date, I can get that for you if that's important, but that's when we got into the, we had to actually start following that program and.
Yeah, because it just seems now with the economy and everything, it's kind of a hard time, even $6 a month for people to pay. And, you know, this should have been talked about back in 2004, not waiting until 2012. I mean, that's a long time, that's a huge gap. And to put that on, not just his council shoulder, but on our citizens, is huge. You know, there's some areas that were slated to be built out now, some of them aren't because of the economy in 2007. You know, we're doing 1,500, 1,800 permits a year for housing. Now they're down in the, what, hundreds? So as far as everybody, you know, paying their fair share, there's places where there should have been homes, now they're empty lots, are still empty lots. And there's areas that, as far as drainage, some are really aren't properly drained when there's a huge rainstorm, just huge amount of water. And, you know, a lot of things had to be taken into consideration, and they haven't. And I've seen some of those areas where the water comes down and just tremendous amount of water. So I want to see more on this as far as what is actually, what actually takes place as far as cleanup and things like that, because maybe we need to have a better system in place as well on how we're doing this. So I would like to see a schedule of what you have right now as far as drainage cleanup, how that's maintained. You say that we only maintain a portion of that. I'd like to see what that, exactly what that, your timeline of work is.
We can do that, no problem. Just so you know, in the northern range, with all the different subdivisions, they put in their own water quality systems, and they're required to maintain those. So for instance, over by Stewart Middle School, you'll notice a little pond off to the east there from the school. That's for that whole Frontera Village area to the west and a little bit to the south flows through there. That's maintained on a regular basis and taken care of. Shea has taken care of a lot of theirs. First, right there by Second Creek and 104th, that's where we built the new bridge. And then further on down by 112th, there's a big pond in there that is also their water quality as part of their initial development. And we're working, we're working to take that over and incorporate it into a project with parks right now. And throughout the northern range, all the subdivisions have their ponds and they're responsible for the maintenance, not the city. City's taking care of more the local stuff down in the core part, and then cleaning inlets and things like that in the northern range.
So on a $6 fee, that's going to, that's for every homeowner, not just, even though there's been improvements that the developers have put in, those same subdivisions will still have a $6 fee impact, is that correct?
The houses that are built already would have, the fee would be charged to them, and then the other open lots, those would be charged to whoever the current owner is of those open lots.
Oh, no, I meant, you mentioned certain subdivisions already maintain those areas.
Right.
So on this fee, when this is introduced, even though they're maintaining those areas, are we going to take those over with the $6 fee? Is that what you're saying?
No, no. The regional components, we will. So where Shea's running that water down to 112th and Second Creek, we'll be taking care of that area, but the other smaller ponds back up in the system that are associated, so like the one I told you about there at Second Creek and 104th, that's taken care of by Shea.
Right. So were those, I'm just saying, those areas that you talk about, were those homes still?
Those will stay with subdivisions, and then the big, major ones that are on the creeks, actually in the creek, the city will take care of those.
But the folks living in that area there, because I'm sure there's other areas that are about the same as far as type of construction, would they still be hit with $6? fee?
Yes. The six dollar fee is to cover the regional, the regional components and the stuff that the city takes care of, which is, anything that they're taking care of now, they'll continue to take care of.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Bullock?
Just to add to it, in 2004, we did get an update on this, and when it, I was first on council, they brought forth this to us as an unfunded mandate that cities had to start maintaining canals, drainage systems and everything. And at that time, we had no idea how it was gonna be done. This has been a work in progress over many, many, many years. And I can actually say, before going off council, the mayor and myself, we received an update back then on this same stormwater drainage. And we were always waiting for the government to fund it. And because, and I guess they figured out really quick that if they didn't fund it and we kept it going, they don't need to. What we should have done was stop. And then we would have had, we wouldn't have to worry about it, because if they don't want to fund the mandate, then you tell them, "We don't have any money either." But it's just, I just wanted to give that historic update. This has been around for a long time, and I've seen this presentation many times. And now with the six dollar fee, I think we talked about this two years ago, on how we would bill it, or what was the best way to do this. And I'm glad we're finally at a solution for this.
Mr. Moreno?
How would, how would multi-unit complexes be built for this? For example, apartment complexes or things like that, how would that work?
Multi-unit complexes and things like townhomes and that are gonna be treated more on an individual basis, just like the commercial and the retail lots. So we'll actually do some down and dirty calculations. We've got some automated methods to take, go from aerial photography, look at the hard surface, measure out the area, and then based on that unit cost that I talked about earlier, they would be billed according to that unit cost. And so in the case of a townhome area, you've got the townhome, which would receive a bill, and then there's the homeowners association, which also owns the common ground, they would also receive a bill.
But that would be split equally between the unit owner and the HOA?
That's really up to the HOA how they deal with spreading that cost out, but that's probably the method that would be used.
Okay. And then renters versus owners of properties, since it's, it would be tagged on to the property tax bill, then I imagine the property owner would pay?
That's correct. It's billed on a property owner basis.
Okay. I'll just say, I do have some concerns with the fact that the public education campaign hasn't really begun yet, and we're towards the end of the timeline already. I would just say that if we plan to get this in November to the county treasurer for billing, that the public campaign should have started already.
I agree. We'll jump on that and get it back up to speed.
Mr. Douglas?
One more question. If, say this is delayed, and we don't get a good handle on it for 2012, so what does 2013 look to implement this later on in 2013? What kind of cost factor would it be then?
We wouldn't really play around with the cost at that point. We would still come back with the same cost. We wouldn't make any adjustments for anything at this point to get this initial fee put in place. So we would just carry everything, all the work that we've done now forward to billing in 2013 in November is when we would have our next opportunity.
Because I would think you'd take this opportunity for the outreach for the summer, and then for next year, that first outreach, and then look at implementing, I mean, that's just my thought on this, because people need to really contemplate on what you're doing. This is, you know, gonna be ongoing thing once it starts, and really educating the public, because, you know, once again here, we're asking for them to dig in their pockets for six dollars more a month. It may not seem like a lot, but, you know, to get someone to understand what the purpose is, you know, is huge. Thanks.
Now, it's just me. First thing off the bat is, I hate fees. I think it takes away the public's opportunity to vote on a tax. And so I just hate fees. And, you know, our government, our state government, you add stuff, everything's added, "We need more for your license registrations, we need more for this, we need more for that." And at the end of the day, we're getting muscle to have to come up with money to take care of stormwater. I know that's not your problem, Darren, but I want the public to know that I do not support fees. I'd rather go to the public and say, "This is what we want to do for you, are you willing to pay for it?" So I'm really frustrated with having to get into our residents' pockets for another six bucks a month. With that being said, we have some of our seniors that we do our property tax rebate, the average is seventy-two dollars. You're gonna rebate them back what they're gonna have to pay, and they can't afford those kind of things. I think the even more frustrating piece of this to me is that all these cities that you popped up on here are totally different than Commerce City. We don't have a utilities division. Therefore, we don't have a billing, a billing process in place. Therefore, our costs are greater because we have to offset the billing costs. With that being said, beings that we have, local entities that do do billing, has there been any discussion or any talk in having that tied to a different form of billing, i.e. through a water bill or something of that nature that will reduce the cost to the resident overall by looking at a different partnership other than the county?
We did, we did approach the water district, and they weren't interested in working on this with us. It was, they didn't want, they want another fee on their bill and have to deal with that coming through them for questions, because it appears on their bill, because that's where people are naturally gonna go to first, and that's the reason they gave us for not wanting to work with this at all. There's also a cost that would be associated with that. It would be something similar, or possibly even greater than what the county is offering.
You know, that's really a shame, because our customer base is the same. And if we can show us savings to our customers by working together, I think is a huge piece. And when you're talking about having another piece on their bill, I think that comes down to that public education piece. I would rather charge Joe Citizen five dollars a month if we could get by with it than six dollars a month by being able to utilize our other entities that serve the same public. So I have some concerns there, and one of my big pieces right now is relationship building with the existing entities that we have to work with. So it is frustrating, because when you see Brighton on there, quite a bit less than us, yeah, they may only be participating at a certain level, but they have zero billing cost, because they can just add it to what they currently are billing through their public works or through their department for water and sanitation. So it's just a real frustrating issue right now to have this popped in our lap and say, "Go get another six bucks a month from the citizens." I know it's something that we have to work on to move forward, and I'm sure I'll have many more questions when we get to the retreat. Thanks for your presentation. Mr. Moreno?
One more comment. And this is more for the council's discussion, well, actually not discussion, but just a comment that I wanted to make. I think this needs to be a topic at the retreat that we discuss. You know, that the Quality Community Initiative is gonna come back with their recommendations soon. I think it's a matter of priorities and what we want to ask for that will do the most good in the next ten years. I don't think we can ask for both. I don't think we can ask for a sales tax increase if we decide to do that, and a stormwater utility fee increase. I think there has to be a priority. So I'm looking forward to this discussion at the council retreat.
I agree with you, Mr. Moreno. You know, what our citizens at home that are watching this on TV, the ones in the audience, they get to see potential, have to pay for trash, potential toll road on tower, and we know, sitting up here as representatives of the community, those things just don't work. I mean, having to deal with our public. We need to ensure our services, but we have to come up with ways, if this is something that's required by law for us to have to participate with, we need to weigh those issues and determine how we're gonna handle them, so that we can have as much relief for our residents, especially in a down economy. You know, four or five years ago, when we were doing eighteen hundred homes a year, our permit fees were up, and we were fifteen million excess revenues a year? This is no-brainer. We would just fund it. But today is a different story, and we have to look at ways to fund these kind of things, but we're gonna have to prioritize, and I think that happens during our retreat. So thanks for the presentation, and the council will have to sort it out and see how we move forward.
All right, Mr. Manager. Now let me tell you, now they're riding bikes. Be careful on the next one, okay?
Reliable to be an extremely fit city staff.
I know.
These next two presentations don't fall quite so neatly into city council retreat preparation. They're more in the category of council orientation. One thing that staff committed to doing to city council after the new council was seated last fall was to periodically bring updates to you and provide overviews of specific departments. So two that we have on tonight's agenda, the first is the Communications Division, which is a division within the city manager's office, followed by the Police Department. So Michelle Halsted is here to provide an overview of the Communications Division.
Okay. Come on up, Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. This is gonna be very similar to what Mr. Hayes presented in terms of his economic development goals and organization. So to walk through the communications team, as I've mentioned a few times, we did some restructuring in the last year, and we have each individual staff member is responsible for very specific departments and/or divisions. For example, our senior communications specialist, Julia Emco, does our internal communications and economic development. We added a bilingual communications specialist in the last year, Ivan Castrejon. She's responsible for not only doing direct outreach to our Hispanic population, but also covers police department crime prevention, communication activities, as well as neighborhood services. Stephanie Johnson is the communications specialist who works with planning and public works. She also oversees our city newsletter. And then Megan Dwyer does parks and recreation, as well as special events. And again, these folks are dedicated to those departments, because ultimately, the communications division serves all aspects of the city, and we provide services for every division. Tanya Westby not only does our internet and intranet, but she also does all the videotaping that you see and we see tonight. And then I'm responsible for all of our media relations, key economic development activities, working with council, and then other key issues and special events. Last year, we set several strategic goals based on the findings of the communication audit, and also the comments that you provided during your retreat. I won't read through all these, but these continue to be the goals that we strive for in 2012, and will continue to add to them as we move forward. Another thing that's important to note, and for some of you who are on council in the past have seen this slide, but there's a hierarchy to successful communications, and it really starts with getting the division in order. And that's what we spent the bulk of last year on. We followed the strategic communications audit, we consolidated existing staff, and we really found that, given the significant turnover in the last three to four years, we really needed to make sure we had a solid foundation. I'm pleased to tell you that we've had those pieces solidified, and we've started to work up this pyramid, and we've had successes in each of them, but we're only gonna continue to get stronger as we work together. And I hope that the takeaway is that we've had many successes, which I'll talk about, consistent with the goals from 2011, and we're looking forward to many more. So we had nine tasks to support city council goals, and I'll review them briefly. The first was making sure we looked at the audit and made sure that the strategic communications plan was consistent with your priorities. We not only presented the findings of the audit in February of last year, but we identified a six-month implementation plan, we refined our strategic communications plan, and we provided you with an update of those activities in advance of your budget retreat. One of the other goals we accomplished, we talked about last week, which was the 2011 citizen survey. We created the survey instrument and executed that telephone-based survey. Again, that data is statistically valid, and it reinforced the qualitative audit findings, and we've been using those opinions in our budgetary and policy decisions. Another key goal was to improve our communications consistency and transparency with clear process. We did create the division's first-ever strategic planning process. Not only do we look at it from a year-long perspective, we look at every three months, and we work with the departments and the divisions that we serve to identify what's coming up, so we can be much more proactive than we have been in the past. We've also drafted citywide policies for social media, for crisis communications and media relations. We've drafted and implemented division-specific policies, and we've redesigned key publications to improve the look and the feel. Another goal was to break down the silo mentality and create connections between departments and cross-department communications. We've tried, we've done our best to share all the plans, and we've actually improved a bi-weekly employee newsletter, and have become much more engaged in employee-led committees, such as the Wellness Committee and the Activity Committee. We worked with Human Resources to communicate the open enrollment changes this year. And again, we refined our organization chart, as I talked about in the beginning, to make sure that every division and department has a direct point of contact within the communications team, so there's one person who's looking out for all of their interests and needs. The employee survey we completed at the end of 2011 certainly reinforced there's more work to do here from an internal perspective, and we certainly plan in 2012 to roll out a pretty robust internal communications program. Another one of our goals and accomplishments was to make sure we communicated economic development successes. And Mr. Hayes talked about many of these in his presentation, but we did coordinate and execute several large-scale media events, not only for the Greyhound Park, but King Supers and Boys and Girls Club. We were able to promote and get the incentive program placed in some of the major trade publications that economic development experts read, and we've certainly designed materials for the business appreciation event that's a success every year, as well as worked with the Rocky Mountain Real Estate Challenge to make sure we can maximize the value of our participation. The other thing we had a goal was to develop and enhance our media relationships. In 2011, there were seven hundred and twenty-eight media stories about Commerce City. Forty percent of those were a result of our proactive efforts to get them placed, and we wrote about one hundred and eleven press releases, and we had regular meetings with local and regional media. That certainly is a fruitful effort. We hope to expand that in the coming year, looking specifically at our Hispanic publications, as well as reaching out beyond our local and regional media to look at national trade publications and other things of interest that we can further expand our presence. Another goal we have is to support our external programs. A lot of the things that the city does is provide services and activities through parks and recreation, public works, and our police department. We've done quite a bit in the last year, in addition to producing the monthly senior newsletter and our seasonal recreation guide. We've redesigned the flyers and brochures for police and public works that haven't been done in almost three to four years. We were also successful in leading the effort to secure a media partner for Fourth Fest. We brought in Ninety-eight Five the Wolf to do the simulcast of the fireworks music, and they're going to be doing that again this year. And again, we had a great marketing plan that increased hometown holiday attendance, and we've really improved the video center for our website, and we plan making more improvements to make our website even more accessible in the coming year. The other thing we sought to do, based on your guidance, was improve outreach and communication between elected officials and stakeholders. We instituted the monthly council corner in the newsletter, and we help, depending on whom is the counselor of the month. Those are due soon. We also have drafted event-based or issue-specific talking points for when you're out and about, and then we host the annual State of the City. And last year, we had more than two hundred and fifty folks in attendance. And finally, our goal was to develop measurable objectives and additional programs based on the citizen survey. And we've really focused that goal on taking the findings from last year and the lessons learned of a year of doing this to look at our draft 2012 strategic communications plan. The tenets of that is really a greater focus... The tenets of that is really a greater focus on direct communication. Based on the citizen survey and based on our employee survey, we know that we need to go directly to our employees, our residents and businesses, and make sure they have that information. We want to make sure we're really leveraging all the tools and tactics in our handbox, so to speak, be that flyers, be that social media, be that event listings. We want to make sure we're really using all of the tools at our disposal. And now that we're staffed and we have a better focus, we're hoping to do that. We're also implementing a target approach for our Hispanic community, which now comprises of nearly fifty percent of our population, and we're hoping to increase the brand recognition of all of our pieces. And that's one of the things we took away from the citizen surveys, that folks want information from the city, but they don't necessarily realize it when they have it in front of them. So, we want to do a better job of that moving forward. Obviously, the strategic communications plan for this year will be finalized after your retreat. So, with that, I would open it up for questions.
That was from before. Do you have any comments or questions now?
Just a brief comment, Michelle. Having been on council before the website update, having been on council after the website update, it's gone from zero to sixty. It's user-friendly by far. When I get on websites of other cities, the most user-friendly website, I think, of any city in the metro area, so just kudos to your staff for that, because that information is very accessible.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Douglas?
Thanks, Michelle, for your presentation. Just over, just seeing things here on paper, and now being on council and being a citizen, I can see there's a lot of room for improvement on our communication. And I will be bringing this forward on our retreat, because I don't think we really utilize our ability as far as technology and all. I look at our TV station, our city station, and it's, I turn it on, and just a lot of generic things on there. I think we're really going to improve that, utilizing Channel Eight with Comcast. I know like with Denver, you can go there to the city government, and there's on-demand videos. And I think, we don't do that, and that's where folks can go and utilize that area. You know, we have the website and everything, but a lot of people, you know, still use their TVs, and we need to touch bases on that. As far as, I mean, there's a lot to talk about, and I'll be bringing a lot of these things up at a retreat. I appreciate you going through here and showing all the comments that have been done and studies and all, but I think we can do a lot more. Thanks.
Seeing anyone else, Michelle? No, you're not on. All right, Mr. Bullock? Pay attention.
I want to thank you for this update, and just give you kudos on the oil and gas, that the updates that have been put out on the website, just for citizens to be able to go and find out information on anything they wanted to know about the meetings we've had on the oil and gas review committees and everything. There's always room for improvement, but if you would have looked how far we've gone in the past year, we have made great strides, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Michelle, thanks for coming in. I'm really glad that the past year is beyond its past now, because I know you were developing the department. I'm looking for a lot more of that in-house type of work to be done, which I know will be done. And any updates and any improvements to the process, I thank you. I would agree with Mr. Douglas, so I'd love to be able to partner with the school district and get Channel Eight to handle some other programming, like, and we talked about it years ago, high school football games, some of these seniors can't go see their kid play ball, stuff like that. If we could, you know, and I know a lot of it has to do with the handheld units that it takes to do the filming, but I think it'd be great if we could have some other programming and information for our residents. You know, we have a lack of ways to get information and communication to our residents, and I think we should talk to and partner with our other local entities again and say, hey, if South Adams has something they need to put out to their residents, to let them know what's going on at South Adams, we should be utilizing it. If we're going to be doing an impact fee, which apparently was set up prior to this new council, maybe that's part of that education process of how we reach our residents, so it can be explained what it's for, why it's happening. You know, I think that I'd like to get to the point where we have a way to reach out to more residents. Some of these seniors that are watching this on TV tonight, and non-seniors that just can't get down here, they need to have a way to be able to see those pieces, and I think if we utilized Channel Eight a little differently, that more people would take advantage of it. So, thank you again for your presentation, and I'm sure we'll talk more about this at our retreat.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is administrative council business.
No, we still have one more.
No.
Please.
Chuck, I was cutting you off. I thought that was four. That's only three?
That's only three.
I hope this is all good news, Chuck. All right. At least Michelle's not on a bike yet, but they're working your way up there, Chuck, so be careful.
Mr. Mayor, while Acting Chief Sonier is getting his presentation ready, just a quick side note, in the department presentations, what we've tried to focus on is responding and showing the things that your staff has done in response to direction we received from city council at last year's workshop. And what's important about that, it's an ongoing reminder that city council sets the vision for our community, sets that direction. It's our job as your staff to then take actions to do a weekend to accomplish that vision. That's why the workshop at the end of this month is so incredibly important, and why we're glad that the leadership team will be there as well, is you will be setting that vision for the next year or two, and that direction is extremely valuable to us, and we will take that direction and develop our work programs to make sure that we're accomplishing council's goals. So, with that, Acting Chief Sonier.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you for having me here, and I will point out that in 2012, the Commerce City Police Department will have the Bike Patrol out and patrolling. So, we already have our bikes out, so we don't have to worry about that one. Thinking about this presentation, I will apologize because this didn't come out in your packet. I was trying to think how to put it together. I was waiting for certain numbers, and I didn't get all of them in, but I will email this presentation out to you, so you'll have it with you. So, thinking about what's the best way to just kind of present the Police Department for the new members of council, leaving some of the old members of council what we are and how we're staffed. Currently, of course, you have the Chief of Police, and there oversees basically four divisions, the Office of Emergency Management, the Professional Standards Commander, Support Operations, and Patrol Commander. And I'll go through all three of these individually, and just how they all kind of fall into the big process, or all four, sorry. In Professional Standards, you've got Internal Investigations, Training and Recruitment. Now, with any department, and this podium charged me to stand behind, those that have seen me speak before, I like to move around, so this is going to be tough. It's important, because accountability is always important. Transparency to our citizens is always important. Policy, training, all of those things that we do to make sure that our officers are the top-notch, that they should be, and the top officers that they are, all come out of Professional Standards. You know, it's policies, procedures, accreditation, recruitment. You know, the three theories are, we hire the right people, we train the right people, and we hold them accountable. And that all comes right out of that. It's all throughout the department, but that's the main focus of Professional Standards. The second department, which is Support Operations, is, kind of sounds odd, most departments will call it Investigations. But from Support Operations, we have three reports. You have a lieutenant, which is currently vacant right now, which was my position, oversees the Records Division, School Resource Officers, Crime Analysts, Crime Prevention, IT Specialists, Explorers, Community Outreach. There's a whole bunch of the stuff we just didn't put on the slide, just to give you the basic of it. That division itself is important, as you heard other departments talk tonight about involving the Police Department. You know, we're heavily involved in Fourth Fest, the Community Outreaches, Derby Days, just a number of things that we believe we need to be out there. You know, being the, you know, the customer intimacy that we have, the city ambassadors, every one of the officers in the department are members of that city, that they can answer questions, whether it has to do with the Police Department, whether it has to do with economic development, communications, they should all be knowledgeable in those areas. And that comes out of that Support Operations. Then you have Investigation Sergeant oversees the A Platoon detectives. For lack of a better term, that's detectives that work Monday through Thursday, ten-hour shifts. Two of them are property, and two of them are person detectives. From that division, he also oversees the CSIs, the Crime Scene Investigators. And unlike PV, we don't solve crimes in an hour. Sometimes it takes us, you know, five, six months, if not longer, to get DNA analysis back. I wish it was, it could take an hour, but it's a long time, it's a long process to take care of. With that person also oversees North Metro Task Force, the Gang Task Force, and the Auto Theft Task Force. And where those positions are important is, those officers are not at the Police Department. They are off-site. And where that's so important is, if you watch, and most of you did, watched the news and saw the news come out about the hundred felons we just arrested, those former officers were directly involved in that takedown. They were very involved in the investigation of it. It's very critical to have those officers out there, because they have a direct impact to our community. Now, they say, well, they're a part of a metro-wide, but as you can see from that arrest, a lot of those people affected our citizens. You know, when we're not talking about the homegrown marijuana, we're talking about cocaine, guns, murder, robbery, some big-time criminals. It's nice to be part of that, to be able to be part of it and help take down that off the street. The next part is the Investigation, which is the B Platoon, which basically means they work Tuesday through Friday. But same thing, two property detectives, two person detectives, and then over also sees property and evidence, which is a key component to any police department. You know, we process thousands and thousands of pieces of evidence every year, and they need to make sure that chain of custody is properly, because all it takes is one little mix-up with one little piece of property, and some criminal goes free. So, that's a very important division. And finally, the victim advocates out of that division, which are very important, because now we've helped victims of crimes. Once somebody becomes a victim of crime, that's where Support Operations has to step in. You know, we need to really step out and reach out to those citizens. And it's cross-functional, because they'll reach over to the Crime Prevention Officers, and you've been a victim of a burglary, they need to reach out to the Crime Prevention Officer to say, hey, can you come over and do a site visit with this home, and how does this person make their home safer? You know, let's get people feeling safer, because I don't know, one council's been a member of a victim. I have been. They stole my patio furniture off my front porch with my squad car in the driveway. I'm not sure how you do that. But the fact is, is that being a victim of crime, no matter who you are, you feel something taken away from you, and that's where the victim advocates will step in. They're also highly involved in domestic violence, which is very key, because a lot of our domestic violence calls are repeat offenders. And it's that education of how do we break these cycles? Not break up families, but how do we break the cycle of domestic violence, and how do we get people educated? So, they serve a very large role, plus they're very active in every outreach we have. Finally, Patrol, well, not finally, Patrol is the backbone of the department. We have an A Platoon Lieutenant, which also says north, and a B Platoon Lieutenant, which is south. Basically, they cover each side of the week. What that's south and north is, our department operates off what we call a geographical imperative, and that's based off what we call a comstat process. That's where we will look at all the data and all the numbers, and we'll look at hotspot areas. And we look at, let's say, for a good example, one of our hotspots, say, is Walmart, and I'm picking on it, because it's right behind me, it's one I can think of, and it's a hotspot. We're seeing criminal activity, and I'm not picking on Walmart, but naturally, in time, you have a big-box retailer, you have 911 hang-ups, shoplifts, that type of stuff. That would be given to our south area commander. Somebody is now responsible for that. It's just not that we have a problem, it's that we, now you have something to do with it. That goes to the point of your hotspot can be five calls for service, which goes to your quality of life issues. It's the barking dog, it's the speeding cars in Bell Creek, it's the, you know, the loud neighbors. You know, and it may be in that south area or the north area, but it may be just four or five calls, but we now have somebody to put in charge of that. And to me, they have to report back to, first, Patrol Commander, then to me, is, what have you done to fix that problem? Or, number one, have you recognized the problem, and you've already fixed it, which is more important to me. And my hopes is that we have the processes, when I bring that, okay, we have an issue here, they've already looked at it, and they're already addressing it. So, that's how we operate the north-south, and we currently look at the functionality of those two positions of, where do you draw that line at? You know, so we make sure we split the crime evenly, so each person has enough tasks. In each platoon, you're going to have a day watch, a swing watch, and a grave watch. The day watch, each usually has one sergeant and seven officers. Each swing watch has two sergeants and nine officers. Graves' watch has one and seven. Now, all these will overlap for consistency time, because like you said, I was given ten minutes, and I like to talk for about a half an hour, but we'll break up those times. So, during your peak times, usually between eight o'clock and two in the morning, we're going to have an overlap of grave officers, swing officers, early swing officers, so you could have a number of, you know, sixteen, twenty officers on the street at that time, when our high-peak crime is. Once back, we look at that crime stat purpose. When do we purposely put those people out there? That's how we look at it. We just don't say, okay, we need, because it's the afternoon, we need twenty people. We may look at Wednesday is our crime area. We may overlap more in that day. We may change up as we need to, more officers in that area. Also, on the A Platoon, they oversee our SIU, which is a special investigative unit. Once again, another key group in this takedown. They went out and found the two suspects we had in our city and arrested them right off the top. And I can tell you, they were key people, because they were part of the top of the list they wanted picked up first. These officers, sometimes you see them, they look like they'd be panhandling, to be honest with you. They got goatees and scraggly hair and holy jeans and ratty T-shirts, and they're driving an old beat-up Vega, and they're working an area. Then you see them a week later, and they're pristine uniforms, cleanly shaven, flat-top haircuts, and they're out doing aggressive enforcement. So, we really give them opportunity to move into an area and really do what we have to do. And that was actually, thanks to council, it was being able to get those people out there and have a group we can go to. They handle everything from, not just major crime, but really what I consider the most important thing to our citizens is quality of life crimes. And I'll talk about that towards the end here. The second portion of the B Platoon is the CSOs, which are community service officers, which are a huge valuable resource to our department. These are officers that are not armed, they go out and take a lot of the cold reports, which is that someone broke into my car, someone stole my bicycle, someone stole my Christmas ornaments. Important things. I'm not trying to say those are not important, because they are important. I can tell you, and I laugh about losing my furniture, yeah, it was only a seventy-nine-dollar Walmart set, but it was upsetting to me. You know, it's, and you want somebody to really come out, and they can go out and take a lot of that, those crime reports, traffic control, a lot of the minor reports, that it doesn't take somebody with a, with basically a firearm to handle the call, which gives us more time to dedicate those resources towards the other criminal activity. Then, of course, our traffic unit, sergeant and five officers, and they are really dedicated to what they do. They start every morning out with, what are our problem areas? They look at those areas, they target those areas, and they spend time addressing those areas, and that's enforcement. Sometimes it's, you know, we get a new stop sign, we'll go in that area and spend a little bit of time giving everybody a warning, because if you don't know it's there, you drive that way all the time, it's nice to be able to say, okay. But when we know it's a problem, it's a school zone, and we've had the complaints, we've had the accidents, we're going to hit that area, and we're going to hit it hard, and that's going to result in summonses, which, you know, without the rest of you, but my pocketbook tends to talk to me. I got to pay a fine, I'm not going to go back to that area again, and I'm going to really reduce my speed. It's like I tell most everybody, is, do you remember the last time you looked at your speedometer? It's when you saw the cop in front of you. That's about the last time anyone looks at their speedometer, unless they're really cautious. So, the traffic unit does some amazing things out there. Finally, our Office of Emergency Manager. Most of you have known Alan Cologne. He's been really very well-evolved in the old fracking. He oversees kind of collateral group. We have one sergeant and ten officers that, as a side job, do the Office of Emergency Management. They're going to react to all of our major incidences. They put plans in place. They put plans in place for, I, I can't, I could spend an hour talking on this side just on the plans they have in place, that if something happens at this location and the wind's blowing northeast at twelve miles an hour, they already have a plan in place of what we're supposed to do, which is hugely important for us because we have a lot of those areas where bad things could happen. So they're really ready for those. They worked on the snow, we worked with our city engineering, our public works department on, we have the huge snowstorms and how we clear the roads, how do we get services to citizens. They're very, very instrumental in that. Right now, talking about staffing, and this is just a brief overview, and I'm open to any questions, as most of you know I like to talk. But currently, we're down one support operations lieutenant, which we're in the process of doing the research to select that person, to fill that slot. We're down one police officer, which was a grant position, which we're currently filling, we're in the process of doing that, and we have two police service technicians, which more commonly are referred to, as you would know them, as the records clerks. It's the young men and women that you meet up front when you go to get a police report. And we've just spent five people in the background to make a selection for two of those positions. So we're in the process of filling those, which is going to be really nice to have that staff back on. Now, to, to go to the end of my presentation, the part of this that I don't have is the minor crimes. And I'll tell you why that's important in a minute, but I think this is important to bring up to council and to all of our citizens, folks at home on TV, is that our major crimes are down twelve-point-two percent. Now, that is huge, huge crimes are down. Now, we're up in certain areas, which still bothers me, we've got to look at it, how we, how do we address those issues? We're still going to continue on it. And if you look since two thousand and seven, we've had a steadily decline in criminal activity, and a lot of that has to do with our citizens, our council, our officers, our education. You know, we're reaching out to people, is how do we really get out there and educate? And we continue those efforts on a daily basis because a more informed person is less likely to be a victim. Now, what I don't have up here is the minor crimes. And I apologize for that, but the numbers were just, were not quite ready, and I want to make sure they're validated before I get them out. But I think those are just as important because quite honestly, it's what most of you are going to get calls on. It's the barking dog, the noise complaints, the speeding vehicles, those type of minor crimes, the drug complaints, the drinking complaints. Where are we at on that? Because those are important too. Soon as those numbers are available, I will make them available to everybody. But we'll continue to address it. My, I'm not going to make any assumption, I'm hoping that they're down like everything else, but this in itself, I think, is very, very huge in the fact that we are down on crime, and we'll continue to go down that route. And as, like I said, once we get the, um, the rest of the crime, or the most, we throw the crime stats out and those minor crimes, be happy to get that to council. Now, that's probably the quickest presentation I've ever given in my life because I was trying to keep it quick, but I'm open to any questions or any comments you have.
All right, just checking. You've been really good about your life tonight, I didn't see it on air. Acting Chief, Sonier?
Yes, sir.
Great presentation. I didn't see a big dollar amount that you were requesting there for something, so I appreciate that.
Well, you know, sir, we're, we're putting the bikes out, we're, we're doing our part.
Good. You know, I, I think the officers are doing a great job, just stay out there, keep these, keep these bad people off the streets so that our residents can feel safe.
We will continue the job we're doing forward and, and, and do our best. Okay? Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, Chuck, thanks for your presentation. You know, in the northern area there, I know that the police department had rented out some retail space. Is there any ongoing discussion with the fire department as far as trying to work with them to occupy part of that building there?
There's no more ongoing discussion reference to the fire department house, but we do have the area by Shea Homes, our northern substation. We currently have five officers permanently deployed out of there, as well as an animal control agent. We have funding for this year to put a, a part-time, and we're hoping to look at if we can arrange our budget, make that full-time kind of a records clerk that would be able to provide more services. Because quite frankly, a lot of times in the northern range, that's what a lot of people want, is they want to pick up that police report, they want to file that minor report. It really wouldn't take a police officer rather than driving down to City Hall to pick up that report, which is important, and that's one of our focuses. But we're going to continue to build out in that area. We're looking at a two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and twenty strategic plan on how we staff that, and we look forward to the growth and move forward.
Now, what about online as far as someone getting a police report? Is that available right now?
Right now, online, they can fill out a form and send it in to us. We have a, at recordsrequest.com, it's part of our, our, our city, but the problem is, is we still don't have a way to pay online, which I know we've worked very closely with our communications division, it is coming, and we'll, we'll be glad when we get that in. For traffic reports, they can do those online and pay for them online, but like if you were looking for a report for your lost cellphone or your stolen furniture, you'd still have to come down to the police department to do that. Or hopefully, really soon, we'll have somebody up north who can just go up, up there and get the same report and the same service.
All right, thank you. Councilman Teeter?
Thank you, chief, that was very educational for me. I learned a lot listening to you tonight. I would also like to take a tour of your department someday too, please.
I, sir, anytime, just give me a call, I'll personally take you through.
Mr. Moreno?
Well, it was going to be nice to not say anything, but the mayor jinxed it by asking me first. I do have a question about some of the stats you put up, chief, about the sexual assaults, the rise there, is that as a result of a, maybe a different classification of that? Or is that, was there just that dramatic of an increase in that area?
Well, sexual assault, and let me cover that one too, is because a lot of the sexual assaults are all grouped together. I could break that down, but a lot of times, the sexual assaults are the sexual assaults where it's a family member, and there just seems to be a rise, there seems to be a report in it, it's one of the things we are currently looking at, is why is there such a rise? Because that is a concern that I do have, and how do we address that? Even though we're down twelve percent, we're up fifty-seven, or, yeah, we're up fifty-seven percent in that area, which is something to me that we need to address. And quite honestly, a lot of time, that's going to be an educational thing. Good examples, we've just trained all of our school resource officers because of that reason in a program called Check First Charlie. Most people have known that over the years, it's called stranger danger, but we've taught our kids that strangers are that, you know, the guy wearing the black trench coat, had a dirty look and then he hides in the corner, but we all know for a fact that's not true. It could be any one of anybody. So the program's talked about check first Charlie, what's appropriate for somebody that's a relative, a teacher, or anybody. So we're working towards that, and that education will hopefully bring down that number.
Great, thanks.
You know, I also noticed a huge increase in robbery. Does that have to do with the economy?
You know, I, I will say, yes, it has. And we've had, we did have a series of robberies around here, I will say, we did catch the gentleman, and gentleman is probably poor terminology, but we did catch the person who was doing a lot of, we had a lot of storefront robberies where we caught the gentleman, gentleman is the word I chose to use, but we've, we caught the perpetrator and currently he's facing charges. But yes, anytime the economy does go down, you know, which is surprising to me, is our theft rates are down.
Yeah, theft's down, robbery's up.
So it's, it's, it is a sign of the times.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, and I didn't see that presentation because it wasn't in our packet, that's why I was trying to skip him. Next item is administrative council business. Mr. Moreno? Leftover, good.
That's me and Mr. Douglas on the oil and gas report.
I was going to do that during reports, and I was going to turn it over to you guys, is that all right? It's not really administrative council business, more reports. Okay?
No, it's administrative council business because there was some things that they asked for us to bring forward to the council.
All right, well, then I'll let you do it now. Um, I, I will start off by saying I did talk to Mr. McAdonie after the last meeting. He said the meeting went pretty well. You guys were able to come down to getting some information for requests put together and start that process. And since the two of you serve on that committee, I'm going to let you give the full update. Okay, I'll start with Mr. Douglas.
Thanks. I thought the talk went very well last Thursday, the citizens heard a lot of input, and they would like to have, they're asking to, for us to do an independent study or bring experts in. As far as the choice, it's like someone from Air, recommendation for that, someone on seismic activity, maybe some from Boulder, and there's some other requests as well. So I think we're on the right track with that, and then we're meeting with the industry this Thursday, and I'm still looking forward to that meeting. And I'd like to add to that there. Councilman?
Mr. Bullock? Some of the things that, this meeting that we had last Thursday was just strictly, it was none of the regulators, it was just citizens and council and staff, and the staff I'm talking about is city staff. And the citizens committee is made up of three people, and then we have two council members on it, that's myself and Mr. Douglas, and Mr. McAdonie is the facilitator of that committee. This meeting that is going to be coming up in, this Thursday, the, one of the things that they were bringing forward is called the worst-case scenario. And I want the citizens to be aware that the worst-case scenario is an event that will probably never happen because worst-case scenario is if every plot in Commerce City that they could drill on got drilled on at the same time, what would be the effects of water, air, and everything else? Well, that's never going to happen, that any company's going to come into the city and drill every section in every way they can at the same time. I call it a scare tactic because if anybody's sitting at home and listening to this, the first thing they're going to tell you is what's the cumulative effect of all the air pollution and water pollution and everything like that? And that is something that I would say would equal out to the movie two thousand and twelve. If the Mayan calendar's right, on December twelfth, we don't even have to worry about the worst-case scenario because we won't be here. So we don't look at the world in those terms, we look at it like on December thirteenth, we'll be here also. So we, they want to bring forth the worst-case scenario, and I've asked them why two or three times, if this is something that can never happen, why are you bringing forth this, why don't we bring forth the best-case scenario? That they come, they frac, and everything goes perfect. But, you know, that doesn't work to their advantage. They also came with a request to add three more members to the citizens committee, which I'm going to totally be in opposition to because the dynamics of this committee right now is working real well, and it would throw the whole dynamics off because we don't have extra regulators, so I don't see why we would put extra citizens on the committee. And if they want to have three alternates to take the place of three alternates, I'm fully agreeable with that because if somebody can't show up, I always believe they should have an alternate to take their place. But I don't believe that we need to put three more citizens on the committee because we basically have three really intelligent committee citizens, we have four, and one of, the one, two of them switch back and forth depending on who can show up. One of the other items that was brought forth last week, if you watched it on TV, you kept hearing people say, don't put the cart before the horse, don't put the cart before the horse, where there were a few instances where the cart did get placed before the horse. And as a city council that chartered this committee, our whole objective and the number-one direct objective we have is, got to put on my glasses now. Everybody agreed on it is to protect the health, safety, and public welfare of this community to the greatest extent possible. That was on everybody's list when they passed around the list of what you want to see done from this committee. Public health and safety, welfare is the number-one priority in this city. Our job as a city council is to protect the public's welfare, and that includes the air, the water, everything. Down at the State House, there was a bill to have a thousand-foot setback, it never got out of committee, but that doesn't mean that we can't ask for a seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback. There is a bill down at the State House right now that is in the Senate Committee, and it's Senate Bill twelve days zero eighty-eight. And that whole bill's objective is to preempt local regulations of oil and gas operations. The senator that brought that bill forth wants to basically cut cities out of any kind of regulatory process, so we cannot say anything, that anybody that wants to do oil and gas drilling anywhere in the state can just come into your city, do it, and you can't say nothing about it. We are totally opposed to that bill. Nine people on this council, so, because if we're protecting your cell, your safety, your health, and your welfare, you know we'll never go along with something like that. Do you have anything else, Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that as far as citizens, the, with the citizens, where it was clarified is they're going to have three alternates, so six altogether, when those three, someone out of three can't make it or they switch, that's, that's where they want to go. They don't want to bring six to the table, they, it's, it's three citizens plus three alternates. And, you know, as far as worst-case scenario, it was just that, you know, we could potentially have two hundred wells here based on the findings of the oil and gas, because if it's, if they hit Peter, you know, that's when we're going to start adding, we're going to start adding wells. So that's, that's what the worst-case scenario was because right now, up in Weld County, they have eleven thousand wells, so. Thanks.
Was there a request for this council to consider?
Three alternates, the council has to, this is a council decision to add three alternates, it isn't a citizen's decision. This committee was chartered by the council, not chartered by the citizens.
So you want to make that request of this council at this time?
Yes, but with a caveat, the three alternates are alternates. If the citizens are sitting at the table, the three alternates are not giving input to the conversation because that's six people then. The three alternates are only, they only come to the table when they're somebody that taking someone's place.
Okay, is that, is that your opinion of it as well, Mr. Douglas?
Well, I think that's the, the choosing of the, the members there. I mean, it's, you know, as far as how things are laid out, you know, that wasn't presented. I mean, that's something we can talk about, but, I mean, that's up to the group there. You know, if someone can't make it, or if they do make it late, someone's, you know, if, if a person's running late, the other person will sit in there and say, for instance, Joe's running late, so Cindy sits in for, for Joe, and Joe makes it well, Cindy, Cindy was there to start out the meeting, so she remains in that seat. So, you know, I would like to, to put forth the motion to add three, three, three alternate for the members committee, citizens' committee.
I just want to be clear because all of our other boards and commissions, an alternate is somebody who is there to replace somebody who's missing.
Right.
And they are not voting members unless they're needed for that replacement purpose.
Right.
We're clear on that?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion to add three alternates to the citizen portion of the oil and gas land use committee. Mr. Moreno?
Yeah, I'd just like to add an amendment, just to clarify to that motion, that I would move to amend the motion that the three alternates will be just that, alternates and not voting members.
Are you acceptable that being part of your motion, Mr. Motion Maker?
Well, you know, as far as voting, I didn't think we had voting, this is just- This is just discussion, we're talking with, because it's up to us to bring, well, it's us to bring back the information for council to decide. So, there's not really, there's not really a setup as voting members. No one has a vote.
So, you're acceptable to that then? That you have, right now, there's three voting members, that these alternates would not be voting members unless they're taking the place of a voting member?
I'll withdraw my amendment and clarify in a different way. I move to amend the motion to say that the three alternates will only be seated in the absence of one of the regular citizen members.
Are you acceptable with that, Mr. Motion Maker?
No, I think it's up to, I mean, you know, then we have to look at the other industry. You know, we had Anadarko, you know, when those folks show up. You know, I guess we had to just keep it the same, you know? If our representative can't show up, someone else shows up, you know, I agree with that. And if, say for instance, someone's running late or can't make it on time and the other citizens, the other alternates there, that at the start of the meeting, that person who's over there replaces that person. When the, when the regular member shows up, they in turn have to sit in the audience and the alternate is taking, is will start the meeting and finish it.
No, I agree with that. I think the question is, the three that start the meeting are the voting members? The three that are alternates would not be allowed to vote at that time? Only if they're voting members. And that's all I think Mr. Moreno's trying to ask, is are you amenable to amending your motion to allow for clarification that the three people who start the meeting for the citizen group are the voting members, the other three as alternates are not?
Yes. Can I amend my motion?
Okay, I have a second and amended motion to allow three alternates to the Oil and Land Use Commission. However, the motion also limits the voting members to the three who start the meeting. Mr. City Manager, would you like to add to that?
Just two clarifying questions. I believe the intent of the motion is to appoint three additional residents as alternates. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, correct.
So, the alternates would be residents and then, and then secondly, no, I forgot my second question?
I think the motion is said, citizen members, which would be residents.
Oh, and I believe the three residents who are on the committee currently were selected by the resident group that's been active on this issue. Would it be your intent to allow that resident group to also self-select the three alternates?
No, we selected the first people on the citizens' group. The city itself selected Michael Scanlon, Dan Stapleton.
No, that wasn't true, Renee.
No, that's not true. The citizen group put their own members in place.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, they did. No, we didn't appoint, we didn't appoint those members.
No, that was, that was the citizens themselves.
That was the Land Use Committee group put those citizen members in place.
Okay, well, yes, well, they can select their alternates.
Okay, is that amenable to you that they select their own alternates? Is that okay with you, saying that both are amenable to amending that motion to allow the citizen group to select their own alternate members? I will ask for any discussion. Mr. Douglas?
And just to clarify that, because I, you know, from all the agendas and everything, I, even as me and Renee said on that board, we really don't have any, there really isn't any voting rights. No one has any voting rights. It's all about dialogue and discussion.
Right, well, but they're at the table as members, as regular members. The others would not be.
Right, but saying as far as voting goes, there's, no one has any voting power. It's just all dialogue and discussion and bringing, bringing back to council for consideration. So, let's just make that clear going forward, that no one has any voting rights.
Mr. Manager?
Sorry, one additional clarifying question. There are currently three members on the committee and one alternate, Ms. Bacon. So, is the intent of the motion then that there would be two additional alternates selected?
Yes.
Is that amenable to the motion maker?
Yes.
How about for the second?
Yes.
Okay, so now I have a motion that allows two additional alternates selected by the citizen group for the Oil and Gas Land Use Committee that would be not at the table during the discussion, only the three members who show up first.
Discussion, yes.
Any further discussion, Mr. Douglas?
You know, I think we, I think we should put it out there to the citizens' group to see who is all in that group because I know, I'm not sure if Michael Tuckins has taken himself off that group or not, so we need to get that clarified to see exactly.
Okay, I think that that's probably a good idea, however, it's not pertinent to the motion that's on the floor and we need to retire this motion in second before we continue. Is there any further discussion on the motion in the second on the floor? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Now, any additional administrative business? That's where that would fit in, Mr. Douglas, if you had any more to elaborate on that issue.
Just to see if we can put it out there, Tom, to see who, exactly how that membership is made up, if Michael is actually on there, if he's still on there. If not, then we can make a move on that. The other thing is, I know I brought it up last week about the showing the tabs on the agenda, has we come up with anything like that?
As I recall, the discussion from last meeting, Mr. McAdonie had offered to show you his method for accessing the agenda.
Yeah, I have that, but.
Was that what you were looking for?
Yeah, I can, I can do that there, but it's just as far as like getting initial one, just saying that, say for instance, the communication package was started on tab, you know, 167 through 138, that's all. You know, it'd be pretty easy to do because you're putting the agenda together, it's gonna have so many pages for that piece of the agenda.
Mr. Douglas and Mayor, what I'll do, Steve, or Mr. Douglas, is give you a call, make sure we're clear on what you're looking for and see what we can do to accomplish that. There might be several different ways to handle it. And to answer your question about reaching out to make sure that if Michael Scanlon is still on the committee, I will reach out to both him and Dan Stapleton about that.
And then, any updates on the Suncor or the situation underneath the bridge over at Sand Creek?
On the Suncor question, we're checking with Suncor to see if they've got any additional updates. On the homeless center at the bridge, I believe Parks and Rec and the Police Department have been looking into that and we should have an update forthcoming.
Is that our bridge? Is the bridge he's speaking about, is it our jurisdiction or the Denver's jurisdiction? Because I noticed that there's some people, when you come right there and turn onto Quebec Street after you come off of 270, that bridge there is the Denver's jurisdiction. Our jurisdiction basically stops right over by Sapp Brothers and just about a half a block east of there. And last thing, I, there wasn't anyone under that bridge unless we're talking about the bridge down on Vasque's. Are we talking about the Vasque's Bridge?
If I remember the diagram.
I believe it's over by Sapp's.
If it's over by Sapp's, what I remember of a diagram that I saw last week between the chief and Parks and Rec, it showed some people potentially in tents someplace between Sapp Brothers and lay the Wetland Park area.
Okay, between Sapp's and the Wetland Park?
Yes.
Over in Cotton Grove?
Correct.
Okay.
But Councilmember Bullock, you are correct, if it's a bridge that is over Sand Creek at Quebec, that is in Denver's jurisdiction.
And, you know, there's some things come up on Suncor or I guess the other owners used to be Phillips 66, or Phillips, Conoco Phillips. Did they, could we find out exactly how that transaction went, if they owed the city any money from past as far as cleanup or anything like that? Because Suncor, you know, taking over that area there, there's been, you know, they're finding leaks from the previous owners. It's been there for, you know, many years. And I know that Phillips is trying to contract and go on and to do some, they wanna frac over in Lorry, but they owe the state like $152 million. So, is there anything that Phillips owes us?
We can confirm, however, back in the mid-'90s, Conoco and the Sierra Club settled. I believe there was a million-dollar settlement which went to Commerce City for Sand Creek. That's what got us started on the Sand Creek Greenway. So, my understanding is that is all that they owed Commerce City for that, but we can definitely ask the question.
All right, thank you. No more reports.
No more, no more administrative business to come before the council, then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is reports. Mr. McBroom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, we sent some email communication out to city council members along with sending outlook invitations to a series of all-hands meetings that I'll be having with city staff over the next few weeks. It was a lot of, a lot of meetings. You're certainly welcome to attend any or all of them. I know city staff would very much like the opportunity to interact with all of you and a good chunk of the time at those meetings is specifically intended to allow that informal interaction. It's also an opportunity for me to get to know folks a little bit more and for folks to get to know me a little bit more. And we've also reserved time on each of those agendas for council members who attend to be able to talk to the group. So, I hope you're able to make at least some of them. If you're not able to attend and still want opportunities to interact with city staff, just let me know and we'd be happy to work on that. We've also included and emailed out to you earlier our weekly update for this week. We have some updates on some, some council action items that we're following up on. This week's fracking update includes the meeting summary from last Thursday's meeting and then, as we always do, we've got a list of some community events that are coming up for your knowledge. As a reminder, City Hall will be closed a week from today on February 20th to observe President's Day, so there will be no council meeting that night. And also wanted to give you an advanced heads-up, the last week of March, I plan to be out of town, so that's the week of March 26th and I'll be sure to mention that again as that date gets closer.
And while you're out of town, who will be running the helm?
In all likelihood, that'll be Mr. Aker unless he happens to be out of town.
Okay, good. Sounds good, thank you. How about the city attorney's office, Ms. Stevens?
No, I believe Mr. Gaylor sent you all a city attorney office update before he left on vacation, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's really it for us.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'll take the opportunity to report for the council. First of all, I would like to thank Walgreens during the daddy-daughter dance that took place. Walgreens actually stayed open for the city to take care of the photos that needed to be processed so that those little girls could go home with their, with their photos with their father at the daddy-daughter dance. I think it was great that Walgreens stepped up and stayed open and did that for the city. I also had a meeting this last week with the city manager and Suncor representatives to get a full update of what was going on with the cleanup process with their oil leak over there. And, you know, everything's moving along forward. They're increasing the trench system that will take on this oil until they get the source figured out. They did say it could have been years back that this leak occurred. Also, they did mention that Conoco, with their agreements with Conoco, that there is some implications there that they would have to help with that cleanup. Hopefully that helps you, Steve, with that. Not that the city would be owed any money, but that Conoco would be responsible to help them with portions of that cleanup. And they were very open and any of the council that would like to contact them directly would be more than welcome to contact them to get a personal update. And I know through Brian's office, you can get the phone number and I have, I have the business cards as well, so either, either direction, we can give you the phone numbers. You can get a personal update from Suncor themselves, which me and Brian got this last week and they're on top of everything and feel very confident that they'll get this thing cleaned up and taken care of. And the oversight is Denver Public Health and EPA. Went to the Rotary Meeting on Wednesday. Also went to the Rotary Dinner on Friday. And I met last week with Cheddar Latchem and Marty Zimzik with Shea Properties to just discuss some overall issues that they were having. Some of them had to deal with weeds, junk, citations they were receiving from the city. They are, they are concerned that their home sales have slowed down and they feel that some of that may be due to the fracking controversy that is taking place. So, they would like to see that settled as soon as possible so that they can get back into full swing of trying to sell homes in the Shea Development. And I'm sure we'll be hearing from them more in the future. One of the things that came out of that meeting, because I've been getting so many calls from different developments within the community, is that I've asked Brian to put together a developer council type of gathering where we can talk to all of the developers in our city that have concerns and issues or maybe suggestions of how we can do things differently to improve their opportunities for sales. So, that's, that's one of those issues that has come forward. I also wanna mention that on our council, we have a rising star. Dominic Moreno, a mayor pro tem, was selected at the JJ Dinner on Saturday night as the rising star for the Democratic Party and I wanna congratulate you for achieving another award. It does help Commerce City residents realize that we have a person that's moving up and really taking a stand to be a good politician moving forward. So, congratulations, Dominic. Also, several members of the council attended the North Metro Transportation Breakfast, Planes, Trains, and Automobiles. We also had a lot of our staff attend that as well, so we had good representation at that meeting. And, let's see. I think that's it. I don't think I missed anything other than I wanted to wish Dominic Moreno a happy birthday. Friday is your birthday? Happy birthday, Dominic. And if there, I wanna ask the council, is there anything that I missed on reports that you'd like to add to?
Did you ask Dominic how old we will be on Friday?
Twenty-one, Vegas.
Finally be able to drink legally.
Nice, good, Dominic. So, all this time that we've been going out, it's been illegal?
No comment, no comment.
All right, no problem. If there's nothing further to come, oh, you got something?
Yeah, one thing, and I apologize if I didn't mention it before, Mr. Mayor, but it was actually just today. The three junior high school students, young ladies, presented earlier today at the State Capitol, they worked with Hunger Free Colorado to do a documentary, documentary bringing attention to hunger issues in Commerce City and in Colorado. And so, I just wanted to give them a shout-out because they really put a lot of work into that project and I'll be asking, I'll be coordinating with the city manager to see if we can get them to show their video. It's very brief before a city council meeting and make a presentation because I think these young ladies really deserve a lot of credit for the work that they did.
Thanks for that. Seeing no one else, we are adjourned. Thank you for coming in this evening.